So with the end of the show, they sent the horn to the mouse and took them home. And they not only fired it, they charged it felony, stealing, uh, stealing, uh, their hot dogs.
Wow.
And so we, we spear court, um, because they, hot dogs that we throw out anyway. Just threw it out, so they just had to have something valuable.
How did, how did even?
You can't take things from McDonald's.
How did, how did it have enough?
Can't take anything from McDonald's.
Right. How did it have enough value to get over to a felony level?
If you steal a nickel from your employer, that's a felony.
It's a felony.
Yeah, so, um, so that's, so they were ruining this guy's life.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So I said, well, that's, and they were all very gang-hoed up, prosecuted. They had some witness come in for them.
What were they gonna do with them?
They'd be charged with assault.
What were they gonna do with them?
They were ruining his life, weren't they?
No, but what were they gonna do with them? Throw them away?
No, he was gonna take them away either.
Right, but what were they gonna do with them?
They had to be thrown away.
Exactly. Yeah.
To throw them away, he took them home.
It's amazing how much food the fast food industry throws away at night. And it, and it's. I know, I know.
Yeah, no problem, bro. I told him, send me that, um, send me that PowerPoint, I, I might can add some stuff, um, and I'll, because there's some, some things that a lot of people don't know about, and I just, and y'all may never run into it, but like, but I was, I told him, I said, I, I probably throw in some slides about posted roads and bridges. Because, I mean, if you ever come across one, you know, that's, that's posted bridge, if y'all, you know, you never know where you ended up going that you never been, but, you know, they need to know if, what that means, what that sign means. Because if you, if it's a, if it's a, a five-ton bridge, you can't be taking that tanker out. Down east, there was, there wasn't, down east, when I was a, during one of the hurricanes, I was around, I had to, I had to take this, um, mobile hospital from the aquarium game, question games in the western, they wanted to go all the way. And, and I told the guy, so look, I said, I think it would be best if you, if you stage it at a Carter-Finley Stadium or Fairgrounds.
How's that working?
Because, you know, by the time you get from Kings Mountain all the way to here, the route, you know, those roads are fluid, and, oh no, we're going all the way, and I said, that's just not a good idea, and especially with eight-track trailer, mobile hospitals. And sure enough, they got down there and got fucking stuck, and I told them, I said, man, you need to stop somewhere around outside of Raleigh and get your bearings and, and get it, make sure, and reroute that. Because that's all, and, and DOT has people sitting there to route.
Feel misery.
And, 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 and the command center, because I've been in the.
Some days are better than others.
And, uh, because I'd get calls, hey, I need a load of diapers to go from.
Well, sir, how are you this evening?
You gotta route that, I mean, you can't just run it straight, and, uh, and not, and.
Thank you, sir.
There's a lot of wooden bridges out there, and people, and they're just not public knowledge, DOT knows them, but, thank you. But, um, so that's what I, you know, I was just going.
Where you want to buy some land that you decided?
You know, in case you.
Property on horse pen?
Honestly, don't even know what a ton is. Yeah.
And what are we talking about, a high school?
Yeah, or, you know, if he's come across, or if you go into a farm and it has.
Good lord.
There's nothing over, nothing over five tons.
Good lord.
There, because you may not get it back out.
Government moves fast, doesn't it?
So that's, I was just gonna add some stuff in there like that, that maybe, y'all may not have ever.
Oh, yeah, there's not any doubt.
But, you know, you, you never know, maybe it helps somebody, and one day, they, they really, maybe they, they finally learn what a ton is, instead of a fat girl.
Hey Patty.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well. We had too many Winfrees, is that what I? I think I agree with you. I think.
I was, I decided to be nice.
Well, Jones.
What's happening, buddy? I was trying to reach you, and you're already here. You slipped on me.
Yeah, I sent you a text to remind you.
Yeah, there's something.
Oh, well, my phone is sitting on the charger at my house. Good place for it, huh?
Well, we used to make out every day without them, though.
Yeah.
Get more refreshment.
That's disgusting right there, ain't it? That's in the kitchen. Or should I add this?
This right here, let's see. Maybe add it at the end, I don't know if they want to talk about it at the end, it really doesn't mix with anything else, I think 12A would be great. I would, I would do 12A, that would be a good place to add it. And, uh, that way, it's at the end, and already got everything else discussed, park-wise, so I think that'll fit in together.
And this is the maintenance for the park?
Yes, uh, uh, just the soccer field.
Soccer field.
Hey Marshall? What's up, Baba?
What, what were you gonna tell me? Got you, okay, perfect. All right, we can go here. Let's roll, folks. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, this is, uh, January the 11th, it is 7:03 PM, this is our regular town council meeting. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones is gonna do our invocation.
If y'all would bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for an opportunity to come together and conduct a town's business, and ask that you give this council wisdom to do so. Uh, we ask that you watch over each of our citizens, and put a hedge of protection around our small town, and that we be deserving of it, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. We'd like to recognize the Boy Scout troop, 139 out of Oak Ridge, they're with us this evening in the very back.
Welcome, thank y'all for being.
Thank you for being here, fellas. Uh, review and adopt the agenda. Uh, we're gonna add 12A is the soccer field maintenance contract, it's, it's up and due. That's 12.
That would be with Hunter Enterprises.
Yes.
Yes. All right, I make a motion that we adopt the, uh, town council minutes from.
Now, like, let's make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Oh, sorry, sorry, we didn't do that, yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, is the Boy Scout troop here to, to just observe, or are they here to speak on something? And it should be on the agenda, because I noticed the supplies were delivered, I was asking. Okay, all right, never mind, thank you.
Uh, Jim?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, Derek. Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. Uh, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from June 8th, 2023, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from June 14th, 2023, this is a special call, town council meeting, budget workshop.
Second.
Any discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the June 21st, 2023, special call, town council meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the, uh, minutes from the December 14th, 2023, regular town council meeting.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor, but I also want to state, I wouldn't have that meeting, I'd be voting against it for that reason.
Very good, any further discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Nay.
And I am aye. Uh, let's get a report from our esteemed fire chief, Todd?
Thank you very much for that introduction, good evening, council and citizens. Um, quickly, just a review for our, uh, call status for the month of December, uh, we ran a total of 101 calls. Uh, of those, the breakdown was 53 were medical-related, 21 fire-related, and 27 of the other variety. Um, I like to take this time of the year for our safety reminders to hit on the fact that, uh, cold weather's coming, and it appears that, next week or over the next 14-day period or so, we're gonna be a little bit colder than what we have been. But just a couple of reminders, um, a lot of people will use alternative heating, uh, be it a, uh, electric heater, or one that I always like to hit on, and that is if you use a kerosene heater. If it's set up for kerosene, please make sure you use kerosene in it, don't put gasoline in it, that is a disaster waiting to happen, because those things are not set up for that. And, um, we see a lot of incidents every year, uh, through reports where people have done that, they just didn't have kerosene, so they put a, some type of fuel in there, but, please read the, the manuals, the owner's manuals, and, and put the type fuel that's recommended in there. Um, talk about chimneys, uh, for a lot of people, that's a, another type. Um, how you have your chimneys cleaned out, and what you do is kind of up to you, but it's probably not a bad idea periodically, and depending on the type of wood that you burn, to have someone come in and check your chimney, make sure everything's okay, um, especially if you have an older chimney, uh, that's brick, you could have some mortar out of it. Several things that happens, crack liners and all, but, but that's always a good thing to do periodically, uh, just to make sure. Um, I hit this last month for Christmas, but the same thing, we talk about outlets and power strips and all. And if you're plugging in, uh, you know, electric heaters and stuff like that, please be careful, read what it says, the limits are, UL ratings and all for those power strips, and even your, your wall sockets, uh, don't overload those, because that's an easy thing to do if you go to sleep and, and you've got it on to, to stay warm. And last, I hit on this because we had this to happen here, but when we, when we talk about generators, they're great, but they can also be a very, very dangerous, um, choice. And outside with a generator means outside, it's not in a garage with the door raised four inches, because that CO will find its way into your house, and I think I've told y'all, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, a couple of citizens in our fire district that were very sick because of that, and they thought everything was okay. Um, and it's, it's really not, they're, they're made to be outside and exhaust outside, so if you have to use a generator, a lot of people do, please make sure you, you use them the right way, uh, and not in any type of enclosed area. Outside of that, um, let's hope that, um, they, they missed the weather, let's, let's hope it's a little bit warmer, and everybody, please stay safe, thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a sheriff's?
Yes, sir.
I got it. Yep, I got it. Robbie, could you r- read us our sheriff's report?
Okay, for the month of December, the sheriff's office responded to a total of 181 calls for service in the Stokesdale town limits, resulting in 15 formal case reports. Of note, on 12/7, deputies responded to an aggravated assault that occurred after hours in the parking lot of the Petro 158 gas station. This case remains under investigation. On 12/30, deputies took a report of a residential break-in and entering at the 880 block of Hutchins Road, same remains under investigation. Deputies with our DWI task force made two DWI-related arrests during the traffic enforcement in the town, caused by type. And this is type of call upon initial dispatch, call nature often was changed after further investigation upon deputy arrival. Numbers to note on the map indicate multiple calls of service at the same location. Two burglary of a residential, two disturbance, 34 alarm, three domestic, two weapon offense, seven warrant, two fraud, one missing person, one sex crime, one noise violation, one accident, 79 other, 16 suspicious, one theft, two trespassing, and 27 traffic, and that's it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Yes, sir.
Administrative town clerk report, Robbie?
Yes, so for, this is the report for January the 11th, 2024, I'll start with the water report. Uh, this is prepared by Mrs. Hunzucker, this is, uh, four water meters were installed, 31 meter applica- I'm sorry, 31 meters are in stock, six applications for transfer of water service and water meters in, 20 water meters slash applications on hold for builders, 10 work orders, 33 811s, 792 water bills mailed out, and, uh, they're doing the reading this weekend, so the, the water bills will be mailed out next week for everybody that's on the water system. For the administrative report, um, uh, with regard to the town's water line extension project on Coldwater Road, uh, that's the one that Hazen and Sawyer's working on. They're still in the preliminary engineering work, uh, on preparing the survey, and they're completing the subcontracts with surveying and geotechnical investigations, um, for the project. Uh, with regard to the town's current water line extension project on Ellisboro Road from the new Byright to Cornelius Court, Kinnonley Engineering's been working to prepare the bid packages. Um, I contacted Kinnonley Engineering and provided them with five local contractors to send the bid packages to. Um, I've also contacted Kinnonley and asked that they instruct the contractors to send all their sealed bids to the Stokesdale Town Hall, and at this time, I'm still waiting confirmation from Kinnonley that those bid packages have been sent to the contractors.
Mr. Legner?
Yes, sir.
Did you make sure a package went out to Yates and A&amp;D Enterprises?
Yes, absolutely, both of those.
Since they're already working for the town?
Absolutely, both of those are on the list, they're first two I thought of, and then, uh, that list was just compiled of asking folks around who does that kind of work near the town, and five is where I came to. Okay, so myself and Ms. Thacker, we reported the quarterly financial reports, um, to, I'd, instead of listing them all, I'll just do them all here. Every quarter for these grants, we have to submit a quarterly finance report and a quarterly performance report. We sent that to Guilford County for the $3.1 million ARPA grant, we sent it to the State Office of, uh, I'm sorry, North Carolina Office of State and Budget Management for the $50,000 Small Town Development Grant, and also to the State Budget Management Office for the $1.1 million NC House Bill 1163 grant. And, uh, submitted the monthly contribution summary report, we do that every month for the retirement system for all the full-time employees. Um, and, uh, this, this time, Ms. Martin actually showed our new deputy clerk, Mr. Winfrey, Mr. Mason Winfrey, that, uh, how to submit the quarterly HUBSCO report, and, uh, that always gets sent to the Department of Administration every quarter. And, um, uh, I've touched on this at the last meeting, but a representative from the, uh, State Budget Management Office reached out and confirmed that we did receive the $175,000 grant in the state budget, we haven't received those funds, but it's been promised to us in the most recent state budget. So with that being said, town council will soon need to discuss how they would like to spend these funds, and once confirmed, I'll work on completing a scope of work and send that to their office so that they can begin the process of, of doing that. And I don't know that we'll get that in a lump sum, more than likely, that will be a, we spend the money, we ask them for a reimbursement, you send them your, your, uh, a total of what you've spent, and they send it back to you, usually do it on a monthly basis, so, but that's just something to keep in mind. All right? The $128,000 check for the lump sum capacity fee was sent to Winston-Salem South County Utility Commission yesterday through FedEx, and I'm still waiting confirmation that they've received it. I put a little note in there for them to call us when they got it, hadn't heard from them today, but it should get there today, so I'm hoping they'll open it tomorrow. Um, just a reminder that we'll be closed on Monday, January the 15th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, and just one more reminder that, uh, I'll be attending, I've been invited to attend, and I plan to go. It's gonna be remote, it's via Zoom, but it's the, uh, the TCC meeting, um, on January the 25th at 2 o'clock. And that's it for the administrative report.
Do we have anything on the planning board?
We do. So for the planning board, uh, the next meeting scheduled to occur on Thursday, January the 25th, here at 7 o'clock PM, and, um, we'll prepare that, that, uh, meeting notice and agenda, put that out certainly by Tuesday, the 23rd, but probably before then. So, so there is a meeting this month.
Property meeting, uh, property com- uh, committee, Mr. Rigsby?
Um, not a lot, other than we did open over the, the holidays, we did open up the basketball and pickleball courts, um, we did a final walkthrough and, um, shot the first goals, and, and my understanding is that they're getting use pretty regularly, so I hadn't had any complaints, I did go by there when it was raining real hard, and just looked at the runoff, looked okay, and so I think we're, we're okay.
Are we planning a grand opening of any kind?
We would, uh, like to, maybe in the spring, we haven't formally discussed that yet, but I, I definitely think it would be a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Stevenson, Town Park Improvement Committee?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy new year to everyone. I'm pleased to report, as Mr. Rigsby just did, um, that we did open the basketball and pickleball courts over the, um, holidays, and they are getting good use. Uh, I did the same thing that Jim did, um, earlier this week, when the rain was so heavy and rode through there to make sure that the erosion was not too bad, and that the water was managed properly, and it seems to be doing just fine, was no water on the courts, which was a, a major, uh, interest to me, so that's very good. Uh, the Park Improvement Committee had not met, uh, for the last few weeks due to the holiday schedule and that kind of thing, we're gonna resume our meetings starting on the 25th, um, at 5:15 in the afternoon here in this room, they are public meetings, anybody that would like to attend is certainly more than welcome to. Uh, we'd love to see more participation other than just the committee, so, uh, public is certainly welcome to that. Um, part of the agenda that is going to be discussed, uh, at that meeting is various accessories that need to be now contemplated for support of the, uh, basketball and pickleball court, among those things are lighting, and I believe there's an agenda item on, uh, some security lighting that, uh, will be proposed later on, uh, this evening under item number 11 on the agenda. Uh, in addition to that, we want to entertain, uh, some benches for the waiting, uh, of those that, that want to participate and use the courts, we'll use, look at, uh, trash cans, we'll look at some fencing, we'll look at some additional, uh, security items with additional cameras and that kind of stuff as well. Um, among those other items and accessories would be, uh, ways to manage the use of the courts, whether it be through an electronic means, or whether it be through of a stacking, uh, mechanism to stack the paddle, the paddles that would be used, uh, on that, so that we know who's up next, um, for the use of those courts. And in addition, we'll be having some signs, uh, prepared, some aluminum signs to go on that are outlining the rules for the use of those courts. And, uh, all of those will be discussed and then, uh, prepared, hopefully, and approved for, uh, budgetary expenses with that. Uh, next up on the large project item again is the nature trail, so part of that agenda for the next meeting will be determining a date where we can all get together and start walking the trails, and try to map out, of course, that would be, uh, very beneficial, uh, one that would be very scenic, one that would be, um, something that was easy to maintain, and certainly to clear, um, and those would be among the, the priority items there. Additionally, and finally, actually, um, as mentioned last month, we have received the specifications from the electrical contractor for lighting the soccer field. Um, so we'll be reviewing that at the meeting, and then making plans hopefully to, uh, prepare and release a request for bids, uh, or proposals on those, to see where we can, and see how those funds can be allocated, and where those funds may be coming from. Any questions?
Mr. Stevenson, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I'd had a chance to ask any of the other council members, where do we stand with these trails that we were gonna install on the town property, you know, they're relatively cheap to put in, it's just basically a path through the woods.
Correct, that's.
And, and I'd, I'd hate for that to get.
That's what we're planning to do, is to get together and kind of map those out, and see where we want to go with those, um, and then determine how and when we can get those cleared and, um, maintained.
We've also talked about in committee, it'd be great to have some, some local scout groups, help us, help out with, uh, the trail marking, and maybe some trailblazing later this spring, so.
Hmm, good idea.
I would just want a simple path to meanders through the woods, that's all I'm asking for, not make this complicated.
Correct, correct.
Let's boat on a machete, and we'll put him out there and let him meander. It wouldn't be the first path I ever cut through the woods, Mr. Whiteman.
You might make a good one, save us some money.
Just long as I can use a chainsaw on the big stuff.
Or a bush axe, that'll work, too.
No motor.
Get you and Rigsby out there, he's good at chainsaw.
Anything else?
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, T, as always, buddy, appreciate it.
Thank you, T, we appreciate it. Mr. Wagner, you're wearing a lot of hats tonight, can you do our financial reports?
Yes, so bear with me on this one, um, I'll, I'll keep it brief, just because Kim's not here, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and if not, I'll get in touch with Kim.
Oh, we've got questions.
I'm ready, so, um, the general fund, the total assets in the general fund, including account receivables, is $3,434,224.04 and, uh, the majority of those are held in the Bank of Oak Ridge CDRs, that total is $2,647,262.53. Let's see, the Water Enterprise, the total assets of that account are $2,748,793.81, and that does include the $600,000 initial payment that we received from Guilford County out of that $3.1 million ARC grant, so, and, uh, that's all I have for that.
Bye, Robbie.
Any questions?
Excellent, sweet.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, we're open for citizens' comments, let's see, I've got a couple here. Bob Whitstone. Bob, would you step up to our podium?
Good evening, council and mayor, um, I just wanted to, um, announce myself, uh, I have been made the manager of, uh, Forbes and Dick Funeral Service here in Stokesdale. I have lived here in Stokesdale about 14 years, um, I've been in the funeral business over 40 years, um, and it's just great to come home to, uh, Stokesdale where I live to help serve in this capacity, um, I'm also interested in being involved in my community, um, doing various services, so.
Just be careful.
Oh, I, I have friends that were in the military, don't ever volunteer.
If, uh, Councilman Jones gets out there messing around with his machete on the trails, we may need you.
I can on a kind of my arthritis.
I may need you for your, your regular, he gets to flinging that machete too much.
Need you for what?
For your regular duties.
Oh, no, I'll be retired by then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, welcome.
Congratulations on your new role.
Welcome. All right, Mike? Mr. Mike Logan?
Hello, thank you for what y'all are doing, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, as your school board representative, I was here to give you a little bit of an update on the school bond project. With that, we need to go back into a little bit of history, I provided each one of you a news article from 1997, and I'd like to read a paragraph out of that news article. The current Northwest Middle School is critically overcrowded with 1,420 students in a school built for only 830. There are 22 classroom trailers at the school, and another three due before Christmas, this was 1997. Um, that was also during a 10-year, $900 million construction plan. So, with that money all spent, we have moved on to the 2019 school bond, and with that, we were gonna build a 200, 1,200-seat high school with aviation magnet program, my underst- understanding with the school system now, the high school is off the list, and they're going to do a magnet program with the GTCC, working with the county on that. So we still need those seats within the high school. Replaced Northwest Middle School, that was on the list. As it is right now, it stands that there is allotted $7.5 million for that, and right now, they have committed 2.25 million of it, and have spent $66,756. Where they are at in that process, as a board member, I will not know until they come to us with the option on buying the land. So at that point, there is no funding for the school, but there is funding for buying the land. Within the 2019 plan, there's also going to, that plan was to tear down the middle school and expand the high school for green space. Another part of it was to redistrict southern area of the Colfax Elementary boundary to existing new school, and that would be the Catherine J. Johnson School. That will alleviate some plan or some students from there, because it will be a K through 8 school. My expectation is for it to alleviate some, if they allow students to go there. There is also a plan to redistrict portion of Stokesdale Elementary School to a new elementary school, as far as I know, and as far as they're stating now, that is not even on the 23 projects that are on the list right now for the bond money. And at this time, there are 23 projects, and with those 23 projects, five of them have committed prices, and in the other portion of it, several of them, that is just purchasing for land or doing studies on what they're going to do. But the majority of the bond issues and what was promised will not ever happen. Do y'all have any questions?
Mr. Logan, did you say they were going to tear down the Northwest Middle School and expand the green space?
Uh, that is what they have in the plan there. Hopefully, that they would end up expanding the high school over there, but in the plan, it does list it as green space.
Is something wrong with that building?
Uh, Northwest Middle School?
Right. I mean, I know it's crowded.
It's in fairly, it's in poor condition.
Is it?
It is one of those schools that is recommended for tearing down.
Can you expand on what poor condition is? I mean, does it need painting, or is the foundation cracked?
The principal said it needs, they need a new school.
That building, I went to that school, and that building was made of block and tile and brick.
I will say, from what I have seen of that school, compared to some of the other schools, the inside of it, it's actually seems to be fairly good condition.
That's mine.
I would also, from a taxpayer's point of view, not from the school board member's point of view, but from a taxpayer's point of view, we need to be fixing our schools instead of tearing them down.
Absolutely.
I'd like to speak to you in depth about that sometime, amongst some other things, but I don't want to jump in front of anybody here, but I kind of raised this with you before, and don't take my anger about the matter personally, but it seems like Northwest Guilford County is getting slighted, as far as the dollars that are spent. I'm sure there are at least some people here that would agree with that. Is there anything that can be done in a way of tracking these dollars back, back in time, in such a way that we can prove a case for perhaps equal protection under the law? If this board that governs the schools is deliberately shortchanging Northwest Guilford County, this strikes me as that should be illegal, because they're responsible to serve every student, not just the ones that they curry favor with.
According, I can't say verbatim, but our Dr. Oakley Superintendent made the statement that the money was going to be spent where it was needed the most, not by who screamed the laus. That may not be verbatim, but that's pretty close.
That's not what I'm asking. Is anybody analyzing this, as far as the money spent in quadrants of the county over a period of 10 years or 15 years, or some reasonable amount of time, in such a way that it could be proven that it's not being reasonably distributed?
The audit of the school system could possibly share that, or perform audit of the school system and the spending of the monies could possibly show that.
I try to keep quiet, because I know it's a complicated job, and you know, this little town's business is about all I can deal with, but at the same time, I know what I see with my eyes over time.
Yeah. I will say, when you go back to 1997, and you read that article, and you, as being a person that has lived in this district, knows this district, my children went to those schools in that time period, yes, I will agree with you, the Northwest community has been relatively shortchanged. They have limited and removed some of the students from Northwest Whiskels with Northern, Kernodle, those did remove students. They have lowered the number in conversations. If you, Mr. Rigsby's been out there, those trailers out there are horrible.
Yeah.
They are horrendous. But I will say that now, not all those trailers are being used. A good number of those trailers are actually empty, and I actually asked if they would like to get rid of them, and the response was, no, we want to keep them there, because if we get more students, we need to have a place for them to go. Our building is full.
Okay.
And yet, they're going to tear down Northwest Middle. Makes perfect sense.
I'm not sure if that's still in the plan, but three things. One, about Tim's question in the perceived lack of funding that the Northwest area gets. I don't have the quote, so I won't quote the superintendent at the time, but I did attend, I want to say it was March of 2022, a school board meeting, and asked that specific questions about funding per pupil, and the superintendent at the time's response is on record, and I think that statement was very profound. Because I can't, don't have the quote in front of me, I won't attempt to reiterate it. However, if you could reference, if you so desire to go reference that quote-
I will reference that quote, because I was there at that meeting.
I have never been more floored in my life at the answer to that regarding public education. Second thing, is this $1.7 billion bond, I believe it was the largest bond in North Carolina at the time, or maybe about education, billion dollar. If I said million, I didn't mean to, billion. The projects that were in front of us in the Northwest area, you mentioned the middle school. Also, there was a high school, where I believe there were 800 seats, and maybe 400 were going to be geared towards-
That was going to be the aviation magnet school, and that was going to be 400 seats for aviation students, and 800 seats for general students.
Okay, so a bond referendum was floated in the Northwest community, the whole county, but those two things were the carrots hanging in front of voters. Are you saying that those two things are not going to happen with that $1.7 billion now? Did I understand that correctly? And I may not have.
The way I have understood it, and the way it was presented at the board meeting was, the aviation portion is going to be worked into with GTCC. So those students will still have a magnet program with GTCC. As far as the overall high school, where you would have the 800 and the 400 together for the 1,200 high school, that has been either pushed down the list or removed from the list. One way, it's either pushed or removed. You can look at it either way.
That in itself is a shame. The third thing, isn't the 2019 facility master plan, one of the objectives of that plan was to eliminate all-
Trailers.
Trailers, mobile units, whatever we call them, trailers, I like that, in saying that some of them had dated back to the 70s. But I believe you just said that there, now that the bond has passed, that there's no, that's no longer part of the plan?
That is not on the plan.
So a lot of the, a lot of carrots-
I will not say it's not on the plan, but is so far down the plan, we do not see it at this time.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you for being there.
Um, I would like to invite you. Y'all, the most important funding within our county right now is that bond and the schools. They are the largest user of taxpayer monies. Now, with that being said, there is, on January 24th, there is a joint committee meeting with four school board members and four county commissioners. They do meet and they do discuss the ongoing projects. I would recommend, I would love to see the council members of Stokesdale, the council members of Summerfield, council members of Oak Ridge to be sitting at that meeting.
Where will it be held?
It will be held at the Guilford County School Board Room at 3 o'clock, I believe it was 3 o'clock, 24th at 3 o'clock. No, you do not have a voice at that meeting, but I honestly, I do not agree with our superintendent. I do believe that if enough people start speaking out, enough people start reaching out, things can change. Because I do feel that we are being directly affected within the Northwest community. I'm going to say there are some areas within District 3, Claxton's getting a new school, Lindley, which was a school that was proposed to be added on to, is now being proposed, potentially being replaced, and that was done at a blink of an eye. Now, the Lindley community is upset in that idea, because they want to keep their school, and there is a study now to determine whether to replace it or repair it, so.
Would you, would you email Robbie the date?
Yes.
Send us a reminder.
I'll send, I'll send you a copy of the agenda. The agenda hasn't came out yet, but when the agenda comes out, I'll send y'all a copy of the agenda.
That would be great. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you.
Do we have any else, anyone else from the floor that would like to speak? We have a presentation from Mr. Sebastian King regarding lobbying services. Mr. King?
Thank you, Council Sebastian King. King &amp; Co. is my lobbying organization. You know, Ronald Reagan said that the most dangerous words in the government are, "I'm here from the government and I'm here to help." Well, I'm here from the private sector and I'm here to help. So what we're looking at is providing a direct return on investment for our towns. My firm has a history of providing return on investment from towns. I represent your neighbor, Summerfield. I also represent Business High Point and some other nonprofits in Guilford County and across the state. What I guarantee with my firm, with my clients, is when they have a strategic plan, we get state funding and we get results, and we get meaningful legislation through the North Carolina General Assembly. A lot of my clients have seen 10x. In the last legislative session, we got $25 million for our clients that we represent, and 10% of the bills that pass the North Carolina General Assembly were directly because of my firm's involvement. So we're just presenting to the town of Stokesdale, do I have your strategic plan, if you need any assistance in Raleigh getting through the finish line? Municipalities and towns that have lobbyists see a 300% increase in return on their investment compared to those that don't. So we're exploring conversations with towns across the state. We think it's a good use of taxpayer investment when you see that return. And one thing that I'd look at, because you know, I care a lot about my home county, strategic plans in Stokesdale look like water investment. We have a history of getting water projects done in Guilford County already, before I started my firm. In addition to that, any kind of legislation you guys see on the state policy, member requests wise, we can help secure funds for that as well. So, and the final thing I'd mention is the potential of, you're not able to get your sales tax, because you guys are responsible and run government with no taxes. That's something my lobbying firm can help out with as well.
Don't tease us.
Can you kind of give us an example, just, you know, I named the town, but give us an example of a project that you guys have spearheaded and been successful with?
Well, yeah, I think it was all over Guilford County news, the de-annexation that faced the town of Summerfield last session. My firm was brought in after Senator Berger sent a letter to the town of Summerfield, and my firm was hired. And to date, the town has not been, Mr. Castro's project hasn't been deannexed. I think that's one of our most successful victories. But the biggest economic driver in North Carolina is the furniture market. Through Business High Point, who I represent, we also got additional funding for the largest economic investment in our state, brings the biggest capital into our state, and return on investment from the state perspective via taxes. We got increased funding for them, we got about $4 or $5 million for the furniture market.
Mr. King, I can't rule out voting to support hiring you for some reason in the future, but there's not a lot, I don't know a lot about the lobbyist industry, just what I see in the news, but you know, I got two questions. How are you regulated? Do you, you know, is there a commission? Do you have a license to do what you do, or your firm? And those dollars that are spent, if we give you a dollar of taxpayer money, where does that go? Because I have this vision in my head of politicians being winded, dined out on fishing trips, or hunting excursions, or wherever, and you know, if it would come down to this vote, I want to feel good about it, being able to do that without feeling like we're having to pay for representation that we should already have from our elected representatives.
Absolutely. So I'll start with the last part of your question, of paying for already having good representation. I think Representative Faircloth has served the town honorably and has done a tremendous job as a senior appropriations chair. I'd note that he is retiring, though, and that is a senior appropriations chair in the North Carolina General Assembly, that going into the long session of 2025, he's brought a lot of support to our town and our community that we're going to be missing out on. Assuming we will have a good representative, there's still going to be freshmen, and my tenure from working with the majority whip's office, to securing funds already through my lobbying firm for towns and nonprofits and corporations, that experience, I think, matters in conjunction with your representative. And towns that have good members in the General Assembly still need some support with other members. It's not one member making all the decisions in the North Carolina General Assembly. There's 120 in the House and 50 in the Senate that you have to get thumbs up from, a majority of those folks, to secure the funding. And that's kind of what my firm specializes in. But to answer your question on who regulates us, the Secretary of State is who I do all my reporting with, but I'm governed by general statutes. The state legislature sets all of our laws. And since we're in public meetings, I'd like to say, we do not bring briefcases of suitcase, suitcases of money to legislators. It's against the law to provide any form of contribution to a legislator as a lobbyist.
Well, what do you offer them?
Results.
I know, I'm just saying that, you know.
Yep. So we're, we're in Raleigh 24/7, so I used to be a member of Guilford County, you know, when I ran for Senate in y'all's district, but since, since then, I've moved to Raleigh. We're in Raleigh 24/7. I joke around when we're in session. I pretty much have a tent outside the building of the North Carolina General Assembly, so towns and clients that hire me, they get full-time representation of the North Carolina General Assembly. And to the point that the councilman made, the question of, you know, y'all's representative is inundated by thousands of requests, not just by towns, but by constituents, nonprofits, and other organizations that are seeking funding as well. So keeping the town of Stokesdale and other organizations front of mind in the General Assembly, we've seen, and studies have showed that 300% return on investment is scientific proof of that.
You mentioned that one of your biggest successes was working with the High Point Economic Development Firm?
That's right.
And they got $4 or $5 million? Which one was it? Was it $4 or $5?
Well, it kind of depends. That was just the furniture market process. We've helped fund Guilford Apprenticeship Program, which is a workforce development. That was on the legislative agenda. We secured $4 million for Carolina Soccer Foundation as well. The, I couldn't remember the exact of the furniture market, but we had an entire legislative agenda where we secured about $12 million for Business High Point priorities.
Now, are you saying that-
Okay, hold on one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's, it was $4 or $5 million, and now it's 12?
Well, that was for the furniture market, that individual project that I was referencing. There's other priorities. They set a whole legislative agenda of money that they were seeking. So when I reference the furniture market, then Carolina Soccer Foundation, then the Guilford Workforce Development, all those projects are-
Okay.
Now, are you, are you saying that if you hadn't been representing them, they wouldn't have got any money? I mean, you said a 300% return. What if, what if you hadn't been representative, they hadn't had a lobby firm, would they have not been able to get any of that money?
I wouldn't say that. I think they would tell you that, and I encourage you, if you want to reach out to my clients, reach out to them, and they'll testify to the work that I've provided for them.
No, I'm not saying you don't work.
No, 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 I know, I'm saying, don't take my word for it, you can, you can reach out to them.
What I'm saying is, you know, I guess it's kind of like if, would, would they have got any of the money if you hadn't have been representing them? Was that the perp, the reason they got the money? If you hadn't have been there, they wouldn't have got the money?
That's my understanding, and I think that would be their understanding as well.
Really?
I'd be happy to tell you that, yeah.
So would you, would you recommend, you know, us having a specific project? Is it more palatable to the legislators to go to them with a specific project in mind versus, hey, the town of Stokesdale wants $5 million, they don't know what they're going to spend it on? So- So as we, we have these discussions going forward, would we be better coming up with a strategic plan and something specific to, to engage you with and?
No, absolutely. I couldn't echo that more because you can't just go and ask for blankets of money. You'd need a direct return on investment from the state from that investment or to show how it benefits your community or your town in a meaningful way.
Well, if, if we discussed engaging you for our project, do you provide some sort of outline as this is what I'm proposing and I'll do and here's the probability of success based on some criteria that do, you know? Hate the idea of just blindly handing you a sack of money or writing you a check.
That's right.
You know, what, is there a standard way of going about this? Because, you know, I, I for one, I'm totally ignorant of this process, hiring a lobbyist.
No, and, and that's kind of the, that's what I encourage all my clients to do is let's coordinate together, let's create a strategic plan, or you can do that amongst the council. And when you have that strategic plan, I can consult on strategies on how to achieve that strategic plan, whether that's funding, policy changes, and lay out that avenue for, this is about a 95% probability of success based off my conversations with folks in the General Assembly. Or, hey, this, this one might be more challenging, let's shoot for this instead.
Do you do anything with federal grants or anything like that, the fed on the federal side? Because I know there was a lot of money with the recent Biden Build America back, whatever it was called. I mean, is there a possibility to work on the federal side and working for some federal grants as well?
There is. My firm specializes on the state level today. We're looking at expanding. I would hate to make commitments with taxpayer dollars with funding that I haven't gotten for other clients. I'm looking at the nonprofit for that and proving proof of concept before I take that to taxpayer-funded folks and ask for their funding to secure those grants.
But there is, there is reasonable, there's money out there on the federal side.
Absolutely.
We just got to find a pathway.
That's right.
Excellent.
Is there anything else?
That's all from me. Mr. Mayor.
Sebastian, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Very, very informative.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Yeah. Push that sales tax thing.
You got to give him his sack first, though.
That's okay.
Did you see that smile when you said sack of money?
All right. I believe we have Commissioner Pat Tillman with us this evening.
Speaking of sales tax, come on up.
First thing we ever ask you.
And property tax.
Oh, well, good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and members of council for having me. It's, it's been a little while since I've been in, in your chamber, but always delighted to be back up in Stokesdale and with my District Three wingman, Michael Logan. So I, you know, I talked with Mr. and, you know, there was no real specific agenda or expectations. I was like, hey, what do you want me to say? What are we doing? So I'm here to answer questions or, you know, get information that you need. So I know it.
I, I started this. I don't mind, you know, throwing something out there. I, I wanted to be sure that if there's anything sneaking up on us, that you could give us the heads up so far as Guilford County. You know, a lot of the money that we spend here, we send back into Guilford County from the state to pay for things like animal control, the fire marshal, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, we're, we're tied to the county every which way. And it's, of course, you know, it's something we've been advocating for years, is the return of our sales tax distribution money. And I know you can't do this by yourself, but I'd like for you to get the question answered one way or the other in front of the present board. Because once, if you get a no, if you get a yes, that'll be great. If you get a no, then, then I want to talk to my fellow council members about going to the legislature and see if we can't get a, some sort of special local bill passed to get some, at least some of that money returned to Stokesdale. Our citizens pay this sales tax and yet they receive no benefit. I, I for one, think it's really nutty to connect the sales tax distribution to add valarium tax. Guilford County receives this money based on a headcount on per capita, and yet a number of years ago, they voted to change the way it was distributed and cut Stokesdale out of this. And the, the final thing I'll say is, last time, I was familiar with the math involved. To make this change, Guilford County would have had to adjust their budget 2%, not 20%, 2%. That means they'd have to raise taxes 2% or cut spending 2%. I know Guilford County doesn't do, doesn't cut spending very well. They seem to be kind of out of control from our little corner of the county sometimes, but I always try to reserve judgment, realizing that y'all got to do a lot of things from social services to law enforcement to operate in the schools that, that I'm glad I don't have to do. So that, my fellow council members may also have some other questions or concerns.
If I may, just to follow up because it's relevant to what you just said. I just saw an article recently about the proposal of raising the, or charging a higher fee to collect property taxes. Now, I know that we, we don't obviously get our property, our, our sales tax back, so we're not really, and we don't collect the property tax. So I don't think, I just want you to correct me, I don't think that, that will affect us because we don't collect, the county doesn't collect taxes on our behalf. But would, would it not affect the fire department? Because they, they have a fire tax, would it not affect them and cause their, cause their expenses to go up if that passes?
Well, for, and you're right. So Stokesdale, because you don't do your own levy. So essentially, towns and municipalities, you know, in a way are paying for our staff to do that collection. And I think it was 14 years ago was the last time we revised those numbers. So it's, you know, other counties have, have done it far quicker than, and more recent than we have. So they were looking at the numbers. I had a lot of questions about it in our last meeting and our work session, particularly, I think we had some members from, from Oak Ridge were there. Jim Kenneman, I know, was there. And so I had question, my, my suggestion, and we ended up, we got consensus on this, was to, to sort of punt on it for 30 days, just to give the towns a little time to his orbit, because they had sent some emails during the holidays, but this was sort of the first formal announcement that they were considering raising it. I think they gave us two options, 0.6, 6.5, and then I think, but, you know, 1.4%. And those were like Jamestown, the other towns you're familiar with, but not Stokesdale. I don't know in terms of the fire. In fact, I was looking up some numbers just for my own benefit prior to the meeting here. So you're only, you're, it's the fire tax are the only dollars coming in. Is that correct? What, what about your corporations that are here? Do you get a, are there certain property tax?
No, sir. There's no property tax.
So the only stream is the fire tax?
And that's not to the town? And I, I asked that question because the fire chief and the fire staff is here just so they could get that benefit. We do not, the town doesn't have any relationship with the fire department financially, but obviously if it's going to affect their budget, then they're going to have to look at raising their, their tax levy if it's going to eat in their budget a little bit.
Yeah, and that was my contention in our last work session, was that we need to give folks a little time to look at their numbers and, and have those conversations before we made any vote. I, I don't know that I'm going to support it even still, but there again, it's, you know, the other option is for towns to do it themselves, and I think that is very daunting and could potentially be more cost prohibitive. But at this point, it's been, I think they said 14 years since we've done anything with the amount. And kind of back to your question, in terms of appraising of anything coming, the only thing really that's, I know is getting a lot of chatter, as you may have seen in the news and media outlets, is the, the, essentially the food tax, the prepared food tax. And I'm on record as being against that, especially given the bonds that we've been talking about and how far stretched our citizens are with the reevaluation. It's just, the economy is so fragile. And it just, to me, it's not a creative, innovative approach. It's, it's a little lazy to just, let's put a prepared food tax out there. I would be much more in favor of the legislature allowing us with legally binding language to have a quarter cent sales tax, because that affects everybody. Apartment folks, non-property owners, people that are coming in for the furniture market, all the great events that we do have, we bring a lot of people in from out of county. And, but you know, we just, we go down to the legislature and advocate and lobby, and we didn't get paid for that, by the way, to try to talk to Senator Berger and others to get that language. And it just, it just never went anywhere. But we're, we're not giving up that fight. But again, the prepared food tax is the only one that's really getting a lot of attention. And I think, I suspect will be, that'll be coming before us for a vote pretty soon.
Is there anything? I'm sorry. Commissioner Tillman, there was an article in the Rhinoceros Times about the commissioners discussing the incorporated towns helping out with the school systems. Can you expand?
Yeah, so historically, you know, there are, a lot of schools are in the city limits of Greensboro. So this was really a, an idea that's been floated at different times. I don't know how serious that is, but essentially for folks that don't know, it's where a lot of times the county and the city, we will partner. You say, if we've got skin in the game, we need to have skin in the game too, particularly with a whole host of issues, particularly with our Health and Human Services and our Homelessness Task Force, those types of things. So that's what, that's where that's coming from, that we get the city to, you know, to, to partner up essentially.
Was it talking about small towns? I mean, of course, we don't have a property tax.
Yeah, it would be in the, the city limits proper.
And you mean the city limits of Greensboro? Or you tell about, I mean, we have a city limits too, or town limits?
Correct, but yeah, not, not the local municipalities.
So that wasn't talking about that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it talking about it from a financial standpoint or more of a services standpoint?
Financial.
So, so it could, it could find its way to, to Stokesdale. I mean, you know, if, if, once you go down that slippery slope, then, hey, why can't, why shouldn't everybody do it? You know, and then we're, also, and we're kicking money over to the elementary school that we're already paying through our property taxes. So I, I just, I don't like the idea, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, to me, it's another, in my view, my judgment, it's, it's a bit, it's not very creative. It's, you know, let's get in a room with a lot of smart folks and figure things out a different way. Spend the money more wisely. You know, renovate and repair when we need to. School board member, I'm looking at you, you know, instead of letting it fall in such disrepair. And that, and that really, honestly, if we're really talking big picture and dreaming the impossible dream, we really need to get off the whole bond cycle anyway. That's just a real antiquated model. If you look at states like South Carolina and Greenville especially, going through some public-private partnerships, a little more sophisticated lease, leaseback agreements with contractors and school systems, that's really the model we need to get to. Because even with the, the 1.7 billion, and, and it is with the B, Councilman Foye, my approach, I mean, it, it's scary to think about the size of the number. As soon as we build these schools, I mean, they're, by the time we get done, we're going to have 20 more schools that are going to be in the condition that the ones we're fixing now are in. So we really need to kind of re-approach all of that, in my opinion.
My understanding is about something like 60% of the county's budget goes to the Guilford County schools. Do you, as a county commissioner, as far as conducting your business, do you spend 60% of your time addressing issues pertaining to the schools? Or is it more like 6%? I, it, all I know is what I read in the local publications, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of connectivity between the Guilford County Commissioners and the Guilford County School Board. And, you know, you, you folks have the oversight responsibility for the Guilford County schools. You know, if, if they're trying to tear down Northwest Middle School and it's determined it's a usable building, then it seems like that's something that your board might ought to look into and, and take some action to, to stop that if something unreasonable is being done with a, with a public asset like that. So it, what, I, I just don't understand how, how so much money can be spent and yet we have so many students going to school in an old trailer. If you look at the headcount per student, so far as what's being spent, I can't figure out where this money goes. It's like a black hole.
Yeah, two things. One, I think it's, it's right around 54% of, of our budget is for schools. So you're close. And, and, and really, we actually are a lot more connected now than we ever were, even in my, my first term on the Board of Education. We, we did establish the Joint Facilities Committee, which Mr. Logan mentioned. Now, people get to pick and choose, they're on those committees, and I'm not on there and I don't think Chairman Austin's going to put me on it, but that's okay. I'll keep asking. So there are four members from the Board of Ed and four members from the Commissioners, and they are meeting, just like we have one on the 24th. I do encourage you to, I'll echo what Mr. Logan mentioned, to be there and listen, because you'll hear the questions we, and I go to the meetings, I don't, I'm not on the committee, but I, and every once in a while, I'll nudge my colleague and say, hey, ask about this, because there are certain questions anyway. So the committee members have the say, but it is open to you to come and observe. And, you know, schools, it, it, yeah, it, I mean, it's, it is, it's so much money. And, and, and it is, you know, the biggest battleship really in the county in terms of employees and students that we're serving. But there's no excuse. We've got to be better. We can't have trailers. And we've been fighting this fight for a long time. And, you know, I think what, back to your point, and I'll close out this thought, that oversight is important because we do ultimately control the purse strings from the Board of Ed. And it used to drive me crazy when I was on the Board of Ed because I was always feeling like the county were, you know, but now that I'm on the other side, I see a lot, I can see it a lot clearer. So we do have oversight. Some of the schools that these, these designs were very elaborate, and, and I get that, you know, we're reimagining education and the buildings are more innovative and, and for the curriculum that's happening, not just fancy spaces. But some of it was, I was like, well, it looks like we're spending an awful lot on these very elaborate, whereas you could save money with economies of scale if you could build them a little more homogeneous. But, so that's where we do have that input. The way the Commissioners Board is constituted now, I don't know that there would be a situation where they would just say, you know, we're not going to fund this because ultimately, even though the bond is approved, we released those monies. It's not just one big debit card. So they have to come for each project and present it just like they will at this next joint meeting.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes?
Good to see you again. I think it's been since the ACC Tournament when I ran into you there.
That's right.
I'm not sure what happened with our Wolf Pack last night. They couldn't buy a basket.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is what it is. You mentioned the Joint Committee. I, I know there can only be four folks on that committee. You would be a perfect addition to that because you, as you mentioned, you have served on the Board of Education and now with the Commissioners. So you do, you have seen both sides and I think would provide unique insight. Have, have you asked your chairman if, if?
I have. We've talked about it. And so currently, right now, the members, Alan Purdue, so there is a Republican.
Okay, good.
It is on, on the committee. So when I said sometimes I'll nudge someone and?
Well, he's got a fantastic resume and should be on there.
Yes, exactly. Given his, especially in his emergency service, first responder.
Right.
All his background as a chief and just knowledge of communications at school. So, but yeah, I, I want to be on the committee. I don't know, I think that we're probably going to look at maybe rotating someone that's been on there a while and maybe have me on. It's just, but I want to be on there. And I go to the meetings because.
Good.
Yeah. And so, because that's where you get to ask the tougher questions.
Yeah.
When this, when Dr. Oakley and the team are presenting.
Second thing, I have so much respect for what you and your colleagues do. I know it's thankless and to say the least. And I know you probably get in the weeds of obviously what's going on in Guilford County. Do you guys ever take a step back and maybe look at your peer counties by population and compare the tax rate we have in Guilford County, which is a nudge over 73 cents, I think? And what, what other counties charge? And, and are you aware of how much higher than Guilford is than Mecklenburg or Wake County or Forsyth? Is, is there a unique service that we, that we provide in Guilford County that, that we're getting and, or do we do something incredibly better that supports that value? I, I just kind of, there's been a lot of focus with the new appraisal about, you know, tax rate and, you know, the rate neutral and rev, certainly wasn't revenue neutral, But, and then there's a, my understanding, there's a new appraisal coming, because apparently the appraisal we did, or y'all did, and, you know, a couple of years back, didn't come in high enough for the powers to be. So... And I know you can't change this, but are, are your colleagues aware of how much more taxes that we're paying than, you know, two miles down the road in Forsyth County? Or three miles, whatever it is?
Yeah, and, and we, and historically, we weren't, that, we were lower. And when you talk light counties, we're really talking about Mecklenburg and Wake.
Okay.
Because we're the third largest county, as you probably know, in, in the state. You know, 558,000 humans, right, in Guilford County?
Right.
Somewhere around that. So we're definitely larger than Forsyth. But yeah, when you look at larger, even larger counties by population, my whole philosophy, probably like maybe some people in this room, is a dollar of taxes spent, a dollar in return on the value of that dollar. And, and I know that we're not getting a dollar for dollar. We, we know that. I will say, I mean, you asked about anything unique or special. Our EMS response times are, are some of the best in the state. And, you know, we, we regularly get updates. So, I mean, yeah, there are things that, now, does that equate to money? I mean, I don't know how you monetize that.
That's an important KPI. I mean, absolutely.
And I think what I'd like to do, now that I kind of hearing from you, is, is maybe get a breakdown of some things, and I think that could help, help you. But there, but to answer your question, no. And, and we, to me, being the, the highest taxed county, let's say, or one of the highest, is not a, is not a great thing. But I will say our, you know, the EMS, for example, is just one that we do an outstanding job.
That, that's, that's great to hear, and obviously extremely important. But, I mean, the, the difference in Guilford County, you mentioned you do compare yourselves to Mecklenburg. I mean, our tax rate's roughly 50% higher than Mecklenburg's.
Property taxes?
Property taxes. I mean...
Now, yeah. Now, they'll have a, now, and the other thing about the reevaluation, that is a state statute. And so I think it, it changed, because it used to be, there was a much longer window of time before they reevaluated now. Yeah.
But are, are you not required to, the Finance Office for Guilford County, aren't they required to submit a revenue-neutral budget every time there's a reassessment for your board?
Yeah, you gotta balance your budget. And we just had our third-party audit, and, you know, we, there were no issues.
Good.
Yeah.
So when we talk about, I know reevaluation is in a cycle. So next would be, you know, the tax rate itself, it's also in a cycle. So when is our tax rate opportunity to, to rise again? And is that on the table?
It's not on the table. Yeah.
But, but a new appraisal is, because the, the last one was deemed too low by the state?
Yeah, and that's another, you know, we had a, I guess there was a work session that we did. I can share with you those slides that break down the other counties. I think that'd be helpful for y'all. Kinda gets to your question about the reevaluation, and it shows the difference and where they were, say, six, eight, 10 years ago, and where we are in the most recent one, and when the next one is coming. And again, that's a state thing. You know, they, they get our numbers, and then they, as you say, they, you know, deemed us. But it wasn't a fault. It was just, hey, it's not enough, based on their, and that's a, more of our tax director, Ben Chavis, probably be time well spent with him to noodle through that.
On a layman's, on a layman's sight on that, I will say that my son has played in several stadiums in Mecklenburg County in football and lacrosse. And, and dollar for dollar, their stadiums are better, their schools are better. They've got brand-new schools popping up everywhere down there, and, and, you know, and there's no comparison to what they're spending on schools and athletic facilities versus what we're spending. There's just no comparison. So somewhere, we're, we're losing out on something. I don't know. And I know you say, you know, like, if you compare, let's compare Rockingham, but they still, they're still providing 90% of the same services that we're providing. Sheriff's Department, EMS, you know, maybe they have longer response times because they're a little bit more spread out and they're not as populated out in rural areas. But I, I would think it would still be more relevant than not dollar spent per person, because I don't think there's many county governments out there, you know, with these great new programs that nobody else is doing. You know, they're doing social services. They're doing, there's, there's nothing new that Mecklenburg's doing necessarily that we're not doing, to, you know.
Well, I, I would, I would offer that, that we are leading in some areas that they aren't. In fact, we're a national model for the Family Justice Center. You know, Officer Dale Nix, I was at his funeral today.
I was there to say hello.
And I thought, I thought, sorry, and, you know, that Family Justice Center is a crown jewel. No one has that. I mean, we're going across the country. And there are other areas too. So, and yeah, you know, anecdotally, you can go to a, and here's the thing with Charlotte Mack. And we told this to the State Treasurer's Office when he was sort of having some, a little heartburn over the, the bond package, and it was historically large. Charlotte Mack, every four or five years, does a bond. So let's don't forget that. We're Guilford County, I mean, you know, I'm not saying we've done the best job, but our last bond was like 2007. So, so Charlotte Mack, and even this year, they had a huge historic for, their, their largest ever.
Two and a half.
Yeah, right. It was far more than ours. So, yeah, they've, they've, and I guess that's just the will of the voters, you know? If you can go to the voters, it just depends on how you, you like your bonds. I mean, maybe you don't like them at all, but they've done that every, about every election cycle, they're doing a bond. So when we sort of shared that with the State Treasurer, it made sense. But anyway.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. But we got a long way to go. You know, we got a lot, I mean, Northwest's a perfect example. I mean, we gotta be better and be creative and figure out how to do that.
Anything else?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Dan.
I, I just wanted to reiterate my question. Is there any way, and from any direction, any group that could analyze the spending on the Guilford County schools and conclusively prove that this area's been consistently short-changed? And by some means, get the Guilford County School Board to change their behavior? It, it's becoming, I mean, I'm, these comments that we, we hear as a board and our citizens hear from elected officials that, that are charged with taking care of our kids going to a public school are, are just over the top, in, in my view. And, and so is there any way to check these people up that's reasonable and cost-effective?
Yeah, and those are exact areas where, you know, Michael Logan and I can, can, can fight for those, those battles. You know, in terms of, and I know there's a way to find out, you can break down the spending. I mean, we may, it may even have to come from DPI. I don't know, but it might take some, some digging, but...
Mr. Mayor, can Mr. Logan be recognized?
He may. Would you speak up, Mr. Logan?
Per county, but as far as breaking it down to district, per district, per school system, I'm not sure about that, but if you can find it per county, DPI website.
Yeah, DPI, yes. The other thing too is, you know, I'm not giving up the fight on the, on the traditional high school and the, and the airspace magnet, because that is absolutely what we were promised. And, you know, that's, that's troubling to me, that now we're hearing things are changing and...
Troubling, but not at all surprising.
No, no, no. Yeah.
There's a state statute that permits any religious-owned property, as long as there's religious activities occurring at that property, such as a property owned by, you know, a church, that they do not pay property or exempt from property tax on that.
Yeah, religious, religious tax exemption, and nonprofits too.
Exactly. Is the, is Guilford County committed to holding up that state statute for religious-owned properties, as long as there's a, I, I've got a reason I'm asking the question.
Okay.
I just want to know if the county is committed to honoring that state statute.
Well, sure.
It's a loaded question, I admit, but I've got a reason.
Let me give you an example. Yes, because it's state statute. I had an issue with the Heroes Center, which is a, a board I'm on and serve as the vice chair. And we had a property that just this last year, we got a tax bill. And our executive director, Patrick Davis, calls me and say, hey, man, we're, we're getting it, we got... And I was like, well, that's not, we shouldn't be. But we weren't using the space yet. So people, we didn't have veterans in there, we weren't having meetings. So while we had the property, I mean, I had to go to my board and say, there's nothing I can do. I mean, it, it, we're gonna have to pay the, the tax bill until we get, this next year, we'll have veterans in there, we'll be doing the stuff. So I was just giving you that as, I've had it in my own personal experience with...
Yeah.
When a tax bill comes, even though it's, has the exemption, it's, anyway. So I think you had another follow-up or... What is there, what's going on? Just cut to the, you're kind of down, what, what's up? What, do you have a problem?
No, no, no problem, not yet. I, I just wanna make sure that the Tax Department is committed to, to that statute.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's an important question.
Yeah.
Mr. Tillman, I read in a local publication that the town of Oak Ridge received $145,000 grant for cameras in their park from the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. Happy form and all like that, but is, is that grant of some sort of official or an official program that they applied for? Or was it just a, a, a one-time thing that, that we wanna reward Oak Ridge with this money? Because the town of Stokesdale, we have to pay for our own stuff. We wrote a check for our cameras out of this budget several years ago. And it, you know, it was a pointed discussion. It was a, it was a big bite. So what are we missing here? Can, you know, next go-round?
Yeah.
If y'all are handing out money, yes, our representative, I hope he'll let us know so we can ask for it.
Well, absolutely. And that's, I helped work on that, because they were having a lot of theft, as some of you may, may know if you're in Oak Ridge, and it was a problem. And so we got in there. And so I was, part of my remarks was, at some point, was to share with you, now's the time for you all and, and myself to collaborate on any budget thing that you wanna apply for, if there's, even if we can get in our, I mean, we can get it written in the appropriations in our budget, now's the time to do that. Because as you well know, we pass our budget in June, no later than July. So at the end of this, well, end of February, it, it's, it's a vortex. I mean, it's just constant meetings and it's all the budget. So if there are things in your wish list, then let's talk about it.
Oak Ridge got it because they asked for it at the appropriate time.
Well, they came to me and, and they said, hey, we, what can we do? Can we do anything? And I said, well, let's figure out a way to, to get it done.
Cool. Well, okey-dokey. I just, it's just not, is that?
And you don't need a lobbyist for that.
I don't, I don't recall that being a, a normal process with Guilford County. I don't recall Guilford County parceling out money like that to, to towns. Maybe I've just been missing something. I, I know the town of Stokesdale, I don't think we've ever gotten any money in, in, in the way of a grant from Guilford County. You know, with, with the ARPA money, of course, you know, that's flowing from the federal government, we're receiving. But, but just direct, by direct vote, and here, here's money for...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of my job, is to make sure that if you have those, and, I mean, it's gotta, right, it's gotta be for the public good. I mean, there's, there's criteria involved. It's not, it's not just pork that we're throwing around.
Well, I challenge any, any, any town, anywhere to stretch money as far as we do.
Yeah, no question. So part of this, me being here, is to implore you all to, 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 let's collaborate. Because there are, I mean, I've learned, just in a short time, in one year, you know, there's grants, there's, this was, I mean, there's DOJ stuff that's out there that our team that know about. And so getting you all, you know, if there's something that it's a real issue, then we can...
Well, we do have a issue.
While, while you're here, we need, we, we'll go ahead and start it. We, we need, we need parking. We are terrible with parking. And we need a fence around our ball fields before somebody drives out there and tears them up where we can't use them for a year.
That's exactly what I was gonna suggest, because you talk about lights. We've, about once a year, we have somebody driving on our ball fields, four-wheelers, trucks. So it, it's definitely somewhat similar to what Oak Ridge has experienced. And it's just, I mean, you know, sometimes we catch them, sometimes we don't. But, but at the end of the day, we end up eating, eating several thousand dollars in field repairs.
And we could use some more security too. It'd be nice to have some cameras that's going over there toward the school line, you know, because somebody could come into park and go over to the school. And if we had a better camera system, you know, we would have that on there. And, you know, they're up there kind of looking at stuff, and if they've seen somebody sneaking over that way, you might be able to get a heads up. Something like that could be very important.
Well, maybe we can just schedule something, Mr. Mayor, and at some point, and with, with the manager, and we'll, we'll walk through those type things. That's exactly what I'm referring to, so.
You don't ask, you don't get. Is that right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll do just that. Is there anything else?
Mr. Tillman, our Commissioner Tillman, I can't thank you enough for coming. Please come back. You know, if there's something that we need to help you in the other direction, let us know what that might be. At least moral support, prayers, whatever that may take.
All of that.
I'm, I'm not sure that I would want your job.
Well, they say I'm hard-headed, so I learn one way or the other. Well, it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you all very much, and for what you do every day, and, and for the, for the citizens of Stokesdale. Appreciate you having me.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And would love to see you on that committee with, working with the school board.
Keep us in mind.
Can we take five minutes?
All right. Five minutes.
You want a break?
Yeah.
Take a five-minute break.
Well, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna threaten a lawsuit from the town of Stokesdale, for example. And he's very, he's very good with numbers. That's why, one of the reasons we keep him around here.
We're just taking a break.
But it would be an opportunity for you to point out to your board members and say, hey, you're not equally distributing this money over time, and then that's not even protection of the law. Do you, do you see what I, I mean, you see what I'm saying?
Well, hey, we gotta see what's going on here. Yeah, we usually do. We have to be careful, because we're trying to prevent us not having property tax. So sometimes getting money can cost you, you know, because you gotta keep what you do up. You know, I wish they had maintenance grants. You know, I said something, I, I don't remember who I was talking to, but they said, they don't only do maintenance grants, but you know, something where you hit the bank and, you know, have to keep things in. We don't spend a lot. And I, and I personally, I'm not, I'm not in for the water and the sewer. I know Rockingham County's doing all that. I mean, we've got water, we've always done it. With the exception of, we've got some things going on now where we got some money, but it's always develops. We haven't had that problem. We've got, we've... Northwest and Rangestown were built at the same time. They're the same, same sewer. I've told people before, I've got friends, and I said, okay, you can go ahead and just, you know, we'll be carnival, we'll be 150. And, you know, if that's what you want, a restaurant on every corner and all that, that's, that's what you're there for. And, and that's okay. If somebody wants, if people want that, that's fine too. But I'm not gonna be advocating for it. They're gonna lay me on out of here because of that. I just, you know, you run, it just, it just changes everything.
It does, it does.
And, and like I say, I know there's gonna be growth.
My growth here, and it's changed, some of the parts of the community has changed, but what I love about it is a lot of the state is, and meaningful in how it's all been keeping it in that direction. Like, for example, here, here's another thing that I didn't mention while I was up there. A few years ago, they had a bill in the legislature that would completely change the videos that you guys have. We have it at the state level. See, that would be catastrophic. So we, we did the resolutions back then for those, and we were able to stop it. But that stuff continues to come up year after year. So that would be the biggest assault. But that stuff continues to come up year after year. So that would be the biggest assault against small towns in our state.
Yeah. And there's a lot of people that want to do it. There's a lot of money people want to do it because they want to come in and put apartment complexes everywhere.
And they try to say, well, affordable living.
There's nothing affordable at these apartments. I couldn't afford it. Yeah. I'm not going back to work to afford it. Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, you can put, you can put a town right there on ten, fifteen acres. And I'll tell you, my boy used to work, uh, Brian used to work for the capes. He was down in Wilmington. He was assistant manager of one of his apartment complexes and stuff. And he had some nice places. He does nice, no doubt about it. And, um, and I don't, you know, if he does, gets his thing done, that's all fine. And I tell you, Travis, I'd have called their bluff on the annexation. I'd say, okay, go ahead and split the town because everybody else is gonna want to do the same thing in the towns. You know what I mean? Stokesdale, they want to do it. If you can split them up, you can split anybody up. That's what it comes down to. And I say that ever since the first time we met, right here. The guys down there want to do something stupid like that, they're right ahead. You're going to destroy every town in, in the state.
Well, that's where my concern came in, right in the city area. And I knew what that would do. It would once set a bad precedent. Which there's conversations about. They were talking about eight hundred apartments, maybe a thousand. And I started thinking to think about the art.
Well, then once you do it, once you do it there, you know how that goes. Go to Greensboro now. Everywhere, everywhere where you go, you go out to Jamestown or Old, Old Dog. It's, what is, they unchanged all the names. And I don't even know what the roads are. But you go out there toward the campus, and I suggest apartment, and I don't, I'm not, I don't have anything against people with apartments, but I mean, but I'm just saying they pop up. Once they start, they're gonna pop up everywhere. So there goes your country party you live.
What I always say, that should be, y'all, not a state, not a, and that's what I've always said about it. And, you know, that's what I had some luck with talking with members of the general public. This might not be in your district today, but you're small towns. Cause a lot of members, a lot of.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, they want things. It's kind of like the difference in city and county, you know, out in the country. You know, folks in the city want things. They want more parks. And of course, we're trying to do parks and stuff, but they want more parks and more sidewalks. Yeah, I, I understand that because y'all cooped up right there together. I understand that. But out here, I want a sidewalk out here and somebody's yours to drive. I don't, the rent is going. But, you know, I don't want a sidewalk going through my front yard. And my neighbors don't either. But now some of the young people would love to have a sidewalk through my yard so they can walk up here to Stokesdale. But they don't through my yard. If they want sidewalks, they can put them in our neighborhood and all that. And I'm, but I do want things to be safe. Did you see his face light up when you said something about a sack of money? Now, I'm telling you, I hope they had that on camera. Cause that face lit right up. I know. I'm just saying, I was looking.
There'll be strings attached.
Sack of money.
That doesn't mean a thing, but. Making decisions about which school they're down with, where to build a new one, what kind of. Guilford by architects and engineers and certain. Ten architects, ten different construction. Like when Kaiser fixed the plan for the Liberty Building for World War II, there needs to be some reason applied to this. Every elementary school does a thing like that. A world-class architect.
It's a, it's a small town in Stokesdale. We had five of them.
The township.
Township.
They're all trying to leave a mark on the world.
We weren't a county. The village, the progress, they had an additional tax. They had a village tax.
Yeah, they can raise. One thing we explore doing is send a resolution to our representatives, asking them to. Getting the answer to y'all's question. How is the money being fixed in our district?
Thanks, Todd.
That's the only thing that you would, you would, you know, that is ideating through the.
Thank you, sir. No, thank you for coming. Good to see you. Yeah, I guess so.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We don't need to do it like you need to.
For example, there's a lot of muddy stuff that went on with this building. Even the walking tours. Architects, engineers out of control.
Let me call us back to order. Thank you, Mike. See, buddy. What you got? Oh, okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, moving right along. Um, consideration of health insurance coverage renewal for full-time town employees. Robbie, has anything changed with what they're doing?
Yes, the, the price has changed. And so, um, I, I noticed this, um, maybe around the center of January, I guess January the ninth, I realized that our policy was come and do again. Typically, it's renewed for a, a year at a time for the health insurance. And, uh, reached out to Salem Benefits. That's the administrator of our health insurance policy here. And asked for a, uh, new, uh, rate for the premiums for two thousand and twenty-four. And Monica Jones was kind enough to send me the, the renewed rates. And this keeps the same plan, same, everything's the same. The only difference is the two people that are on it. Uh, so Priscilla has come off and Mason has come on. And, uh, that changes the, the rate. It's decreased. Um, it used to be thirteen hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cent per month. And that has decreased to seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cent per month. And, um, the only other expense is the administrative fee that Salem Benefits charges, which is two hundred dollars per month, and that's staying the same. And so, um, based on the minutes from the last time we discussed this, which was January the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, a year ago, uh, the, the motion that was approved regarding the payment of the health insurance premiums was very specific to that amount. And so, uh, I think it, it may be a good idea for you all to decide if you want to, how you want to proceed with the payment. Um, it's obvious that the last payment, those numbers are very specific to that premium. This is a new premium. My recommendation and the recommendation that, that Kim has is, uh, set a percentage. And that way, if the town pays a percent of the premium, the employee pays a percent of the premium, the rates change, the percent doesn't change unless you all want it to. And one thing's for certain, the rates will change every year. That's without a doubt.
What percentage are you paying currently?
I think right now we're paying a little over twenty percent. I think the town pays roughly eighty-three to four percent. We pay roughly twenty-five to twenty-six percent, somewhere in there.
Now, Robbie?
Yeah.
Hold on, Robbie.
I don't, I don't think so, bud. Seriously. Yeah.
Wait, what?
How can you be eighty, eighty-three percent?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And you were doing, you were really doing great. You were doing great with the financials earlier.
Yeah. You guys are paying about eighty-two or eighty-three percent. We're paying seventeen or eighteen percent. I'm sorry.
That's cool, Robbie.
You are correct.
I appreciate you laying out these numbers. The takeaway for me is, uh, considerably less money, uh, this year, uh, for the insurance premiums and, uh, the, the average age. Anyway, I don't want to get into the why, but, uh, it's, it's good. Y'all still have the same Blue Cross, Blue Shield plan that's administered by Salem Benefits.
Yes.
And keeping in consistency with, uh, as we have done in years past, though this is in the budget, uh, every January, uh, since we've offered health insurance, uh, at least real health insurance, uh, we have voted in January to what the town will pay. Uh, I do want to note that we have only paid seventeen percent of our budget this year, this fiscal year, excuse me. So, uh, you know, there's certainly money in the budget. I'm, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the town pay for full-time staff an amount of seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents, annually for the full-time staff's, uh, health insurance. That puts the town paying ninety percent of the premium. Uh, and as always, I, I do believe in a shared cost with this, with, with the employer paying the majority of it and, uh, employee paying a portion. So, uh, that's my motion, that we approve the town paying seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents, for health insurance premiums for town staff.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have any discussion?
Well, got, got a question or two. Just for simplicity's sake, I'd like to see the town pay eighty percent and the employees pay twenty percent. One, I just make that point because it's just an easy number for, uh, employees, council and citizens to keep track of, just, just as a matter of a suggestion. And then with your, with that amount, that will be good for an entire year before the next increase. Will we have to address this again? It'll, it's for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four.
Yes, sir.
So we won't have to revisit. I'm just concerned about this popping back up with some, you know, adjustment. So that'll cover the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four.
It will. Yeah, that, the, because the health insurance is offered privately, not through the league municipalities, they go on a calendar year basis. Whereas if we got insurance through the league, they would, I believe they're fiscal, uh, fiscal year.
They are. That's how our dental vision and short-term disability, they're, they're through the league and that's done in a fiscal year calendar.
And, and as far as defining what a full-time employee is, we've already got that in the town's policy, right? There's no ambiguity there.
Mm-hmm, correct. I think it's any employee that works thirty hours or more.
Okay, just, just long as it, you know, somebody's not gonna argue that I worked twenty-eight hours, so I should be eligible there for health and, health insurance benefits. So just wanted to make sure that was defined.
Any other discussion?
So circling back around where we are, I, I put a motion on the table. I don't believe there's been a second.
Yes.
Seconded.
Okay, you did, okay. And, and, uh, the figure, uh, that I'm proposing is where the town of Stokesdale would pay ninety percent of the health insurance premium. And that amount is seven thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eleven cents annually.
But I thought we were just paying eighty-three percent. Are you, you're, you're proposing that we increase what we pay?
Uh, I, I believe the percentage would go up, but the actual amount of cash outlay would go down. I mean, I, 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 I'll, I'll go ahead and say it.
What's the, I'm, I'm just asking what your logic is for the justification of paying ninety percent instead of eighty-three percent, which is in my mind's eye, an increase.
Robbie, if you have specific numbers, that'd be great. But my understanding is in two thousand and twenty-three, the average age of staff on the health insurance policy was forty-five-ish years old. Therefore, the rate was determined based off that average age. And this year, uh, the average age of full-time staff on the, uh, health policies roughly twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six years old. Because of that, the premiums are significantly lower. So even if the town of Stokesdale is paying ninety percent, our cash outlay year over year would be significantly less. Robbie, can you confirm what I said is correct?
That is correct. Um, if I just run a, a quick number here, uh, the premium, um, the monthly premium balance for last year, which was one thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cent, if we just say roughly times.
It's a six hundred and fifty-nine dollar savings a month.
Yeah. So, yeah, at a rate of eighty-three percent, the town was paying roughly one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
A month?
A month, correct. That was the town's contribution.
To multiply that by twelve.
Times twelve.
Now, we know we're saving money, but what, what if, what if something happens in the average age of our employees go up? Cause that could go back the other way. I mean, so then, then, you know, do we change it back?
Once we do this, it's hard to walk it back.
Cause that would kind of look funny. If something, you say we had to, if we hired somebody that was older.
Sure. I understand exactly what you're saying. Uh.
So I mean, this would be something we, we.
Now, we'll say, this, this rate is locked in for a year. This is the rate for a year. And, uh, and with the la, the same logic going from eighty-three to seventeen percent, from that to eighty, twenty is a decrease. And so that is a decrease in the percentage of what was being paid. So the same justification for why an increase, then you could say why a decrease.
Well, I, I, I realize that it's down a little bit, but just, just, if, if a citizen gets into a conversation with me about this, you know, it's their money after all.
Understood, absolutely.
And so it's just easier for me to say the town pays eighty percent or the town pays ninety percent instead of, you know, ninety-nine point three four, or whatever that percentage may be.
That's the purpose for this being on the agenda today.
Sure. And, and sure, it's just easier for everybody concerned here if, if that was evened up. And that's, that's my suggestion, uh, just to, to keep it simple.
Well, I don't care as far as the percentage goes. I'm just saying that if we, if we go to something, and we, and I'm, I'm not proposing we go to eighty percent. I would, if I was gonna do anything, I'd stay at the percent we're at. But if, uh, if we're going to do that, we, we, you know, we can't turn around if the age goes up because that, like, like I say, that's gonna look strange. Would it be more palatable to, to just round to eighty-five and make it? No, I'm not, I'm not even concerned about percent. All I'm saying is if, you know, we've got to be careful. I would think Mr., uh, Mr. Attorney. He don't know his name. I'm scared, I'm scared to start that.
We, we don't, we don't want to get into an age discrimination scenario. I think that's what you're saying.
Could that be, uh, I mean, if you start jumping back and forth, I mean, I don't mind changing it by no means. But if we're gonna change it, I mean, if it does go back the other way, even though it'd be a cost increase, that would be something, uh, that, I mean, things are so funny nowadays about everything.
Well, I think the, I think the board should probably elect to do an amount that you're going to pay per year or a percentage you're gonna pay each year. And because there may be changes in, in, we don't know this year if, uh, if there's a change in staff or you add staff or staff leaves and gets replaced. Uh, you don't know what the rates will be. You could always amend the budget, I suppose, later. But I would think either having a fixed amount or a percentage would be.
But not both, because my motion included. But not both, because my motion included both.
Yeah, and I think that might create some confusion down the road if there's changes.
That's a good point.
If it's changing the staff or additions to staff.
Well, the, the finance officer needs a number not to exceed in order to write the checks. I can, I can certainly agree with that. Uh, but so far as, that, that's the amount, the total amount that goes into Salem Benefits, et cetera. But what I'm, you know, maybe it needs to be a separate discussion. The council wants to go there as far as the percentage that we're going to settle on. But. There, sometimes I think of myself as a simpleton and there's a lot of folks that wouldn't argue with that, I don't think. And so that's why eighty percent, eighty-five percent, whatever the number this board settles on, is just easier to, to keep track of. Than uh, something that's eighty-three or seventy-two, or, you know, tho, those types of things. And it's something we could stick with over time, no matter the age of our employees, whether they be, you know, twenty-five years old or, or seventy-five years old. So that's just why it comes to mind. I'm, I'm not, you know.
That's the reason that I brought this to the attention of, of Mr. Foy. Uh, it, it's, it's quite confusing. It's, it's hard to determine. Uh, when you're, when you get these renewed rates, when you have a motion from the past that was very specific to the amount of that premium. There was no set percentage. It was just a dollar amount and it was very specific to that exact cost. It's hard to determine what, uh, since it's staff pulling these, these, um, uh, these quotes from these insurance companies. And then looking at them and then obviously you all would ask for a recommendation of what staff likes. It's hard to determine that when we don't know what we'll be paying versus what the town will be paying. That's why I'm in favor of, of a set rate, like Mr. Winfrey said. A percentage sounds good because if the employee saves, the town saves. If the employee spends more, the town spends more. A set rate, you know, if you set a set rate previously for seven hundred dollars an employee, that paid for the total cost then. I mean, that would, or say five hundred, that's a thousand dollars. That would have left a remaining balance of three hundred dollars. Versus now, that would pay more and insurance would be free. So that's why set rates to me are a little, uh, dollar amounts are a little iffy. Because rates change, but percentage is shared. It's shared cost and it's also shared, uh, savings is the best way to put it. So that's why I put it before you all.
So, um, let me just a little input on that. So I agree with the percentage and I, I also agree that, you know. An even percentage at this point, cause, cause at this point, we're going to save a significant amount of money through the end of the budget year. Probably enough that even if we hired someone of age, we probably would still have a savings there before next December thirty-first. Before it, the, the, and then we could always vote on the contract again next year. And if we needed to change the percentage to get back within the balanced budget, we were just, something we would have to discuss. I think the short-term solution would be, I don't want to go down and cost the, the employees more money out of pocket. Which is, if we go down to eighty, that's what's going to happen. Uh, my suggestion is again, eighty-five, um, that's close to. We're still saving money as a town. We're, we're not going too far away from what the percentage you're paying is now. Um, and um.
Yeah, I'm okay with eighty-five. I just.
Yeah, and that gives an even round number to, to help with.
Understood.
I'm okay, I'm okay with percentages to start with. All I'm saying is that we, if, if, if the age changes, we can't be bouncing around. We've got to, we've got to.
You're absolutely right.
Set on.
I, I think Mr. Landrith makes a very good point. We can't.
I don't want to get in Robbie's pocket over here.
Understood. Understood.
Or nobody else as far as it goes.
We, we can't rework our benefits every time a new employee is hired based on their age. That just seems nutty.
I just think.
And I think that's a good point, you make.
I think that, uh, Mr. Winfrey there might decide to quit and represent them.
Well, well, let's. I, I've heard all of council's comments. I think great points were made across the board and of course, the attorney, uh, helped, helped me out too. So I'm appreciative of all. I will withdraw my motion and uh. I feel it appropriate to make a new motion. And I'll make a new motion where uh. I moved that the town of Stokesdale pay eighty-five percent of full-time staff's healthcare premium. Not to exceed ten thousand dollars. In the calendar year two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Jim?
Um. No, no further. Uh, I'm aye.
Derek?
Is, is there any discussion from, uh?
I don't think so.
I, I, I think that's cleaner, Mr. Foy. I, I'm easier to understand for all Foy's concern.
All y'all's feedback. So that's, if, if we're voting, I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. The consideration of installing light poles near the basketball and pickleball courts.
This is something I requested Robbie to look into and, and I think he and Mason did an extraordinary job. At least getting somebody from Duke Energy to, to respond to us. That's a whole lot better than I've been able to do. So congratulations on that. Uh, Robbie, if you don't mind, if you could just kind of lay out what you, you have discovered here for us.
Absolutely. So, um, uh, probably right after the pickleball court and I was, was finishing up. Derek reached out to me and wanted to get, uh, just kind of a plan to get some security lights put around the new basketball and pickleball courts. Not lights for people to use to play, just security lights. You know, you light up an area, it tends to keep, uh, troublemakers away. It's a good way to put it. So back on December the twenty-eighth, uh, right after Christmas, I met with Ethan Haynes. Contract designer and lighting designer for Duke Energy to discuss the installation of light poles. And, uh, laid everything out in this memo, but basically, uh, he is recommending that we install two light poles. One on each side and I've got a diagram up there that y'all can look at. Um, he's, he's wanting to put, uh, one on the. Top end of the, the diagram there, one on the bottom end, both on the south side. And, uh, basically they'll have to come in, install line at the, uh, that green box, the, the, I think that's called in ground terminus. Which is right outside of the council, I mean, the, um, concession stand. And they'll have to bore it under the road. And come up through. And the reason he wants to put it out so far is if he has to bore under the walking trail, it's another added expense. This keeps them to only boring one time rather than twice. And, uh, that's the process of putting it there. Now Duke Energy will install, what is it? Um, I'm going to get it mixed up here. They'll install a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet for free. And then after that, um, it's, it's two hundred and fifty feet total. The first hundred and fifty are fee, are free. The, uh, cost of the additional hundred feet will actually cost us seven cent for every ten feet. Uh, that comes out to seventy cent a month. Now, I still don't under, quite understand why we have to pay that. Um, he, that's just, I confirmed it with him several times and he said that's the case. So, um, that extra lining, we pay for that monthly. Uh, there is a one-time fee to do this. It's, um, uh, thirteen hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-two cent. And then, um, the, the only options after that, if you want to do it are what lights do you want to put on top of these poles? You have two options. You can do, uh, one hundred and thirty watt light, uh, which is, uh, similar to what's down there now in the parking lot. Kind of dim, but these are LED, so they're a little bit brighter. They're going to do better. He thinks that that would suit the purpose. Uh, versus a two hundred and sixty watt light. And he said, you can always do a one thirty. If you don't like it, you can add another one. The pole's already there. So. It's, it's no additional cost to add the extra light. You just pay for that monthly in electricity fees. And, um, and so that's, that's.
Robbie, did you share with him that these aren't, these lighting is for security purposes only and not for use?
Absolutely.
Did he have a recommendation of what wattage to use?
He reck, he said, obviously he says the more light, the better, but he says that the one thirty, he thinks would be plenty good enough. And if it's not, we can come back and put another one thirty. It's just one of those, you know, he said, you can always add on, you can't take off. Put a two sixty and then you go to a one thirty, it's going to, you'll, you'll notice a big difference. So.
We got guys down there playing with flashlights tonight, so.
Right.
Reminds me of the old days. Uh, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Did, did you discuss with him that there, these lights are going up in proximity to a residence that's on private property, not too far through the woods? And I, I don't have a good feel right at the moment for how far that is, but. Are we pretty certain we're not shining a big light directly towards this private property? It's based on your memory. Uh, we, we okay there, you think?
He did. I know he did a walkthrough of the area because he noticed that there was a, a large gap in the, in the woods there where they came and removed those poles. I'm sure he saw that house through the woods. It's my understanding that these lights are going to be angled downward and at an angle towards the center of the court.
Yeah, just so I've asked the question.
Understood, understood.
Don't sneak up on us here.
Understood.
They are adjustable.
Not from us, but Duke Energy can adjust them.
But they would adjust them if they come around and we needed to adjust them to where we didn't.
Yeah, just thought it worth mentioning, cause I wasn't there.
Absolutely.
Actually have one of those security lights there at their, at that house, I believe. Pretty sure they do.
Yep. Uh, I would definitely want this town to be, uh, in tune to next door neighbors.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we might decide to put one over on the other side one day here.
But, so, I mean, he, you know, he was, he was very kind, took time to answer these questions. Like I say, the why there is a seven cent charge for every ten feet of extra line, I don't know.
The location stake somehow out there, if I want to take a look at it.
Say, I'm sorry.
The proposed location. Is there a stake in the ground?
There are. There's two out there. Correct. They're, they're right there in between the walking trail and the road.
Are they, are they marked with any particular color flagging, say Duke Energy on them? It's just a wooden stake. If I, if I got any question, I'll get up with you.
Okay. I believe, I believe it's orange or pink, if I can remember correctly. But we've had a lot of rain.
Everybody needs to understand, if we put these lights out there, you're going to be able to play basketball under these lights. Because I'm an expert on this. And they, they took the one out at Stokesdale years ago, one time, think they was going to stop us. And we just put our cars up there, turned the lights on. So, well, I'm just telling you. And that's okay. I'm not, I don't have a problem. Uh, cause we, you know, had to put some rules up there sooner or later, but this will be sufficient enough for young men or young women or whoever to, to play basketball. So, and, so you had to decide, is that what, you know, if you want those, that's fine.
Well, the, the hours of use are going to have to be covered in these rules and regs that are going to be posted by the park committee soon, I, I hope.
I, I think a dusk to dawn, uh.
Yeah, and maybe.
Dawn to dusk.
And maybe a review of those rules, uh, by Mr. Winfrey might be in order before it goes to print. I'm just, I'm just saying.
It's going to be awful tempting for, I mean, you know, that's.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, I've been, I've lived it, so. And I'm not, you know, I'm not even saying I'm against it, I, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not necessarily either.
I don't know how anybody would.
Well, fifteen minutes after dark's one thing and, you know, uh, one o'clock in the morning is another, but.
Are we not talking about putting some kind of an electronic lock on the, on the fence?
It's been discussed.
Well, we're going to discuss it and.
If they're already in there, it's not going, I mean, it's got to be able to let them out. So if they're already in there playing and it goes past the darkness and move point.
It'll be easy to catch them if they're already in there.
Well, you know, I'm going to tell you something. I'm not, I, I, personally, I'm not concerned if it played at midnight as long as it wasn't bothering neighbors. And they wasn't tearing anything up. So you're talking about the camera system. Uh, you know, we just mentioned to, uh, the commissioner, I mean, if we had a camera system where we, you knew somebody wasn't tearing things up, I mean, I.
Now, that does bring up.
I know, I know, I ain't supposed to be wanting that or anything, but I just know how children, I mean, not, you know, young men, young women are to. We used to play at all hours at the night and stuff. I'm not advocating for it by no means, but I. There again, I'm going to have a hard time, uh. Doing something that's going to get, get some young man, uh, in trouble for playing basketball at night. Um.
Well, it's the town's responsibility to manage that and minimize the liability, as, as you well know. So we'll take it one step at a time, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know what being a liability, you know, but I understand. I know where you're coming from. I'm just talking real world.
Yep. Yep, good points. Uh.
But personally, I think we need the lights up there.
Yeah, I'm going to have a great new asset and, uh, I, I think lighting for security purposes is, is prudent. For that. So I guess with that, I'll make a motion, uh, that we move forward with installing two light poles. Uh, for security lighting, uh, the new basketball and pickleball courts. With implementation costs of boring not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, and move forward with the one hundred and thirty watt light bulbs.
I'm going to second that motion. Now that money is going to come from?
That should come from the ARPA fund, in my opinion.
Okay, we put that in the motion?
Yeah, to, to be paid out of the ARPA fund.
Okay.
Any, any, any discussion?
Mr. Foy, just asking, is there a Duke Energy proposal that should be referenced here or was this all verbal?
It, it's not verbal. It's all just through email correspondence. Um, rather than printing off my emails, I decided to do these memos for you all. Um, it's, it's just all through email. Uh, it's, it's been just more of a conversation of what is this called?
Mr. Foy, would you be so kind as to reference this memorandum that Mr. Wagner wrote that dated Tuesday, January the ninth, two thousand twenty-four? That provides the description for this work?
I will. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm going to say that, to, to include what Tim just said, rather than repeat it.
That's fine. I'll, I'll put that in the minutes. I do have one question. Now, you said to pay this out of the ARPA funds.
Now, who, who, I've got a question here.
Okay.
Oh. Tim, we have two memos from Robbie dated June.
Three, uh, three, I'm sorry. You, you have three.
We have three.
You do. The insurance was a memo as well dated, uh, Tuesday.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, well, I didn't say it, but I certainly mean the, the one that references installation of light poles near basketball court and pickleball court.
Excellent.
I can put that for the reasoning. I got you.
And we'll need to remember to put that on the budget for next year, which we're going to need to start having meetings pretty soon. Uh, as far as the annual cost.
Now, when you said pay this with ARPA funds, we've got two, um, that we're dealing with. We've got a ARPA fund that's seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then we have a Greensboro ARPA allowance of three point one million. Which one are you talking? That's seven twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to confirm.
I wonder if it'd be permissible if you paid, if you made a deal with Duke Power to pay them so much, so far in advance on something like a project like this. For it to come out of the ARPA fund. That's something I guess we could ask Kim.
What are you talking about? For future?
I don't know. Say, say, hey, we're just, we're going to pay you five, five years ahead. Would you take, uh, twenty-five percent less?
I don't know.
And then take it out and do it at the, if it would be legal to do that. I don't know if it'd be legal. But if, you know, if it was, that'd be something to think about, save some money and.
The only thing that I worry about with that is those ARPA funds, not only do they have to be spent, but the work has to be done usually by, in this case, twenty twenty-six.
Oh, we'd be spending it because we'd be giving them money.
Well, but the work has to be done too.
Well, of course. Of course the work has to be done. We got, I mean, we're doing it with ARPA funds anyway.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying if we did a package deal with them.
We would be given a Duke Energy in advance that they would hold as a credit on our account if they agreed to do that, but that.
Well, we could say, I mean, it could be a free, could be a, uh, you know, we get so, you know, get it for free for, for this package deal or something. Okay, how many, it's not. I don't want to complicate.
You were suggesting prepaying utility bills for X years.
I'm saying negotiate a contract where you have free utility bills.
Well, if we're going to go down that path, we need to hold off voting on this motion probably.
Well, yeah, just, just forget what I said.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm just saying.
We need some polls.
We can't do both.
Yeah, that's right.
And just to be clear, you're talking about option one on the memo?
What if we just bought a couple of old trucks from Jimmy Landrith and parked them up there and had somebody turn the lights on about?
Hey, none of my batteries, none of my batteries is working. I had to charge my batteries, you know.
Just checking on that.
We don't need the trucks. We just wire some headlights.
Hey, I'm going to tell you something. You could not put any lights up there and they're going to play, some people are going to be playing basketball and you lock in fences. And some people are going to be jumping the fences and playing basketball. I promise you, you know.
I agree.
You know, wager you right now about it.
I agree. That's sports betting, by the way.
And I knew that when we voted for the basketball court.
Any further discussion?
I might be one up. I probably couldn't climb the thing.
Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. Consideration of upgrading the lights on the, uh, pre-existing light poles located throughout the town park.
Robbie?
I guess Robbie had a similar conversation with Duke Energy about this. Uh, I guess we're calling this an upgrade. Because we're going to LED lights or proposing to go to LED lights where we don't have LED lights.
Correct. Right now, you've got the, the older sodium vapor lights. I think that's what they're called.
Sodium vapor?
They're high-pressure sodium. All right, question?
Yes.
Are these Duke Power poles?
They are.
Okay, so we pay Duke Power per pole now?
I think we pay fixed costs now, so are we going to save money doing this?
No, no, what I'm wondering if, if we are paying a fixed cost, what is the fixed cost? It's got to be, we got to be paying something.
Uh, uh, I agree. I know that we do have a, a Duke Energy bill. We have several accounts with Duke Energy, one of which says security lights at town park. But now, I've not seen that on the bill. I haven't seen the bill. But now, I've not seen that on the bill, I haven't seen the bill, I've just seen what's been put in quit books, what I can look up, uh, without Ms. Thacker being here. And, um, I do know that we pay something for those, I know that we pay it every month. Um, I, I don't know if that's a fixed rate, or if it's based on the wattage that's used, I just know that typically. I guess the biggest thing is, those lights that are down there are not bright enough.
Or they're burnt out.
Or they're burnt out, correct, correct.
What, what you mean when they're not, when you say they're not bright enough?
Yeah, they're burnt out.
Yeah, yeah, I was down there today.
I'm glad somebody mentioned that, because I've noticed some of them being out, been meaning, thank you, been meaning to address that. If they're burned out, we're, the town of Stokesdale is still paying for a light that's working. And so unless we, I mean, we need to notify them that we, we need service on those, or we should have already done that.
Yeah, we need to find out, I mean, I'm sure we're paying them just like you do, uh, a street light.
I'm sure, absolutely.
And so they, they will come out and fix that light for free.
I put in a work ticket for one of those before, and whenever I initially did this, I did it through the Duke Energy website, and I put in a work ticket. And there wasn't an option for upgrade bulbs, so I did work order for light out, and I thought, well, that works. I got a confirmation that they came and fixed it, but I haven't been down there at night to check it, to be quite honest, I, since that's happened. I've been down there at night, but not since that's been fixed, so.
Yeah, well, it was all about tonight, I was down there before the meeting, looking at it.
That's the one, which, was it the one near the concession stand, that's the one?
It's, it's the one up toward the soccer field, looked like to me, it was, it was out.
Just as a matter of a suggestion, I'd be interested in continuing this, so we can review what we're currently paying. If we're locked in at a, at a fairly cheap rate, and we can just get the lights that are burned out fixed. We might save the town half of this cost going forward for some period of time, just, I say this as a matter of a suggestion.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna be lighting the soccer fields here before long, so when something's going on, we'll have that going. And, um, you know, you can, you can say that it is dim down there, cause it is kinda dim, but, I mean, it is, is a security light. It's not to light everything up all night, uh, so I'd, I'd be in agreement with Tim, so we can find out that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Robbie, about a month ago, I, we talked one evening when, uh, I observed some guys on four wheelers riding around on our soccer fields. Were you able to see those guys when you looked at the camera?
Not at all.
Is that because the lighting wasn't worked, working?
If it was working, it was dim, um.
I mean, I came out here, so I know the lighting wasn't working, but I was just wondering, could you see him on the security cameras?
Not well, I mean, on the fields, not well, um, you know, the camera that looks from the concession stand out onto the field. You could see brake lights and headlights, but the people, you couldn't see.
We need, we need a fence for that, for that soccer field, I mean. Even if you could, even if you could see them, you, you might not even be able to identify, you know.
Answer wasn't notified of this that I know of, did we suffer any damage?
There was no damage, it happened over the holidays, um, and that's why, nobody was here to, to tell you about it, to be quite honest. It happened during the holiday break, I believe, and no damage from what I could tell, I went out there and took a look at it. It was either Thanksgiving or Christmas, I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I heard him from the house and came over.
Yeah.
I, I tried to check it myself when it's snowing, that they seem to, they're drawn down there when it snows, it seems like. I don't know if we'll ever get enough security lighting out there for the cameras to be able to see the whole park.
And that I understand, now, one thing, I don't know this, I don't, like I said, I don't know exactly what we're paying right now. I would have the assumption that going to LED bulbs would be more energy efficient than those high pressure sodium vapor bulbs.
It, it would be, but we're not directly paying.
Correct.
The kilowatt bill. If we wait long enough, Duke Energy might get interested in upgrading them for free to save them money.
Yeah, they did one of mine like that.
Really?
Yeah, they did, they come out and did one, said, they asked me, asked if we wanted one, said, no, not really, it's gonna cost more, we're gonna do it anyway. Got charged by the set, I wanted it, but I didn't.
Turn from the master.
Oh, that's fine, hey, it's just a recommendation, whatever y'all wanna do is fine, I was given a task and I followed through with it, so you all make that decision.
Well, I'm for doing some, you know, lots.
Mr. Jones suggested we continue this to, to the, another meeting.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
What's, what's the objective of continuing it?
To investigate what we're currently paying and see if it would be economical to continue and ask Duke Energy to repair those lights that are malfunctioning. And, and hope over time that, that they upgrade to LED, uh, on their own initiative.
Okay.
I, I will just add, I've got the camera pulled up on my phone, and you can, I mean, you can see, you can't see the middle of the field. But you can definitely see what is lit sufficiently, um, so you can see the areas that are lit, so I'm.
And I'll, I'll tell you, if you say something to them about the bulbs, if you just feel like the bulbs is, is dim. They may come out here and change the bulbs out, with what they, you know, whatever they're using right now, you know, uh. Say, we feel like they're dimming, and I feel like they are dimmer than they used to be.
Certainly, yeah, I can run it by.
Cause they're getting old, they may have never been changed, so, you know, let's, let's explore that, and if not, I mean, you know, we can, we can get some lights. I'm, I'm for, you know, getting some lights.
Is the motion to defer it until the February meeting?
Yes, we, we haven't voted on it yet.
We have to check on those items that we saw.
We have a motion in a second.
Please.
Gotcha.
Jim?
There's a motion in a second? Uh, well, just, ju- ju- just a, a discussion item, I always respect the, the will of council. My vote will reflect my experience of coming out here, uh, last month, when there was four-wheeling on the field. And the lighting was not sufficient at all, uh, and it wasn't picked up on the security cameras.
Any further discussion?
None of us know right at the moment how many of them are, uh, in need of repair, because they're not, either not burning or not burning fully.
I think some of them, Tim, have a mind of their own, though, in other words, they'll burn sometimes, and then the next night, they may not burn.
Well, then we, we need to ask Duke Power to possibly replace them, and if they won't, then we need, we'll have to spend the money. Definitely have to spend the money.
I, I'm just wanting to be sure we got all the information, so council will make the best decision, I'm not above, I mean, I know we need the lights down there.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Derek?
Nay.
You said nay?
Yes.
Uh, Jimmy?
You want Jim, he already voted.
I voted aye.
He did? Okay, Tim?
I'm aye.
I am aye also. Last item for us is the soccer field maintenance, we're due to renew the contract. Robbie, do you have prices on this thing? I don't have any prices, um, the reason that, that this got brought up is, is it was recently brought to my attention that this agreement is, is expired. It expired on the thirty-first of December, and so, um, I don't have any prices for a new, uh, contract with him. I reached out to Mr. Hunter today, asked him if he intended to keep at the same rate, and haven't received a response from him as of yet, and.
If, if I may. I called Mr. Hunter late in the day, I, I guess maybe he was out working, and when I called, he'd already at home. But I didn't know that you had called, Mr. Wagner, but I had a brief conversation with him, you know, explained to him his contract had expired. And asked him if he was willing to continue providing the town of Stokesdale that service, he indicated to me that yes, he would. I asked him if he would be agreeable to update, uh, give, you know, sign us a new contract, and he said yes, he would. And then I asked him if he would continue to perform the same work for the same price, and he indicated that he would.
Right.
And so, uh, with all that said, I, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, unless somebody's got anything to add here. I'll make a motion that we, uh, have staff pursue a new contract with Mr. Hunter. And Hunter Enterprises not to exceed the current contract amount. In the contract dated, uh, April the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and that amount here is, help me guys find this.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand, let me get that. Where is it, I can't see what glass is on or glasses off.
It's the very back page.
Thank you. In an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll second.
And I, by extension, of course, authorize the town attorney to review it, and the mayor to sign it if all those parameters are met.
In the interim, do you want to allow the current contract to be extended until this new contract's approved? And assuming it's approved in February?
I believe so.
I'll make that as part of my motion, but I don't know how we can, uh, do that without the other parties' cooperation here. I, I have a verbal from, from him, so that, that's what I have.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm already second.
You did?
I did.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
I would be interested in, in possibly, um, looking at some language in there, similar to what we have in some other, more recent contracts. Where he gives a thirty-day out if we're not satisfied with their, um, service. And I would also like to have a discussion with him about, you know, blowing the dead grass more frequently. Cause that continues to be a problem every, every year, um, and, and we continue to have to, to call him back out here to do that.
Mr. Mr. Rigsby, it, you're saying that it should be part of the contract, that he would be responsible for blowing the cut grass off of the field?
Yes.
When he cuts that field, or his staff cuts that field, it's green, and it's only dry grass after the sun dries it after he's left. That would require him to make a second trip back, are we sure we wanna do this? I mean, I, I don't know what the ordinary practice is for, for blowing the mowed turf grass off of a, uh, sports field.
Well, I, I know that leaving it on the field is not acceptable, and that's what he's done. So, um, we either, we either give him a, a reasonable timeframe to return, and that's what he's doing, he's returning. When we call him, he says, we're gonna come back out and blow it, um, so I, I, I just think we need to have a reasonable amount of time. That he's gonna come back out, so we know, because sometimes it goes going to the weekend when the parks and rec are using it, and they've had to blow it themselves.
Yeah.
So that, and I understand that he says, okay, it's wet, and we, we mow it in the morning, so can we at least play that? He comes back out before the end of that business day that it's mowed and, and blow it, um.
Do, do you think this could be caused because it's not being cut often enough? And he's actually cutting, instead of cutting a half inch, he's cutting an inch, and that's creating, uh, uh, too much residue on the top?
I, I think it's certainly possible, but I don't, I don't wanna speculate on, on, and tell him how to, you know, how to cut it. Because I know it is a very, um, finite grass, and it has to be cut very specifically, however, um. A better, a solution to, if he thinks cutting it, cutting it a little taller would still satisfy the, the quality of, of the surface. And keep us from having to, to have to blow it, whatever, whatever works is fine, but.
For, for, forgive my ignorance here, but are we talking about having to blow the whole field, or just blow spots?
Uh, I mean, I would say spots, I mean, I'm not saying that the entire field is, the entire field is covered with grass. But it's certainly like, it's got lines, you know, and I've got some pictures that I can show you to give you an example of what I'm talking about.
Do that sometime, I wouldn't mind looking at them, so I can help understand the problem, and, you know, I'm kinda like Jimmy here. When we used to play in this town, we were lots of times playing in the cow pasture, where it wasn't mowed and dodging, uh, rocks and, and other debris, I won't mention. So, is the dried grass creating a visual problem that, in it, they can't see the lines? Or is it causing kids to, to slip and fall, what, why is the, why is the dried grass a problem?
So, town staff, we get all the phone calls, and they've called us several times in the summer and, uh, fall when they're playing soccer. And, uh, we get complaints of, of the grass on the field, folks walk and say it's unsightly, folks playing say that it's a slip hazard. And the folks putting lines on the field to bring their own blowers, blow the dead grass off the field before they can put the lines on. Cause they don't wanna blow, they don't wanna paint dead grass and it blow off during the game. And that's just what, uh, the soccer association, Parks and Rec has. Yeah, that's what they're saying. I don't play soccer, but. That's what they're telling me.
So, um, you know, so they're blowing it, um, they're, they're lea- they're just leaving areas of dead grass. So if they're gonna blow it, they need to at least, you know, blow it out evenly, obviously, they're, they can't just blow it outside the, the playing surface.
Well, that almost looks like we're creating a bigger problem by blowing it off on the field than the clumps around the perimeter of the field. I, I don't have the answer to this.
I don't either, I'm just, this, this is what, what, this is what they're complaining about, um, is, and, you know, so. And that's just a limited area, I don't know if it's.
Is it all the time, or is it just one, is it sometimes when he's, well, let's say the fields have been wet, and he hasn't been able to mow, then he mows, and it's, it's kinda, it's higher?
I can't say if it's a.
Because I don't think it's, it just can't be, is it all the time?
So you can see right there.
We get calls all year long.
It's a lot, it's a lot on the edge.
I mean, is it every, like every week, I think he mows it twice a week.
It's, sometimes.
It rains.
Well.
You know, sometimes.
If it rains, I don't know, I, we've never logged the calls or anything, but I, I know I've sent some emails out about it before, when the calls are higher than normal. But we certainly get calls about it during the soccer seasons.
Yeah, I've never asked you, but I have asked other folks, to, we get complaints to have a law. And, and just date it time and put it in, you know, that way we could go back and, and, and look.
Okay, absolutely.
I mean, I, it'd be nice to, nice to have it.
I agree, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I've never asked you, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I understand, I don't always pick up the phone, but if I do, I'll do it, and I'll certainly let staff know.
Yeah, you're in charge.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'll let staff know, I understand, I understand, I can let them know to do that, so. It's a complaint, especially if it's something, like you say, you need high volumes, if it comes in certain months, and certain months it don't. You don't know unless you've got that wrote down and, and keep a track of it, so.
Right now, if we need it, was every, you know, we could look back and say, well, it was raining those days, we could, you know, have some.
That's right.
Something to think about.
Yeah, I agree.
Obviously, um, I, I, to go to Mr. Jones's point, it, it very well could be that they mowed it, it's these, they mowed it early these particular days. And it was just wet, and, um, so that would probably be lead to a, a possibility to have Mr. Hunter come to a meeting. He hasn't been in a, a couple of years to at least have a dialogue with him about some concerns prior, you know, prior to.
I, I just wanna be sure we're understanding the problem and talking to a turf grass guy, or, you know.
Well, I can, I can bring in a turf grass expert if I need to, but, um, I'm, I'm just saying that these are the problems that we've seen in the past. And, um, I, I personally have called him, and he's not called back. And, uh, I've talked, tried to talk to the people mowing it, and they've just blown us off, and I think it's not just me that they've blown off. It's, it's been other people, uh, Parks and Rec has tried to talk to them, I personally would like to have at least a dialogue with him. Uh, as far as what, how can we remedy this, if it's, if it's, um, just once in a while? Or just ask that it gets blown off before the end of the day, if it is a situation where it was wet that morning, that they come back and blow it before the end of the day.
I can say on my previous term on council, this never came up, I don't know what was different then versus now. Maybe it was mowing it more often, for all I know, I ju- I just don't know, but wouldn't mind you sending me those pictures to myself when you get a chance.
I'm just, so, in our conversations, that we could reach out to him and ask him maybe to be here for the next meeting, so we could have that, ask him what he thinks could be the solution.
If, if managing that is part of mowing a soccer field, then, then we already have the right to ask him to, to handle this problem, I would think. If that's, if it's a reasonable thing for him to be expected to control that and manage that and alleviate it. I, I don't know what's.
Well, and, and I agree with you, I just, again, it, it just has come up this last year, so maybe bef- going to a new contract. Do we need, is it something we need to just have a conversation with him about, maybe it's a one-time thing, maybe it's, uh, if they just mowed it a little earlier than they used to? We don't know, but we know it's happening.
I mean, do, do we, do we need to go down the path of asking him to use a different type machine that catches the clippings? Like a, the mower they use on a golf course green, I, I, I don't know the answer here.
I don't know, that would be a question to him, what the solution would be, is it a?
But, but I don't wanna double this contract, just.
No, I agree too.
You know.
Well, it sounds like he was willing, it sounds like he was willing to do it, and just wasn't getting around to it or something. So, the, the thing is, we're gonna have to start applying fertilizers and things, you know, in February. Is when, if you see the list back here of the things that he's under contract to do, what would you, I mean, do you just wanna add in that, um, thirty-day satisfaction deal?
Well, it's, if I may say, it, it looks like we need to add then to the Exhibit A, or this list of services, it says nothing about blowing.
Well.
Uh, all it says is mow all fields tw- you know, two thousand a week. All it says is mow all fields twice, you know, two times a week is needed.
I'm not willing to do that as one council member because I don't know what standard for the industry. I think we need a, maybe a sample from another town of that type verbiage, unless, you know. I don't want to just arbitrarily throw that on him. It's not that easy to find somebody to perform this, this kind of work since it's specialized. But he's always been very accommodating when I call him. I don't know. Certainly, I'm certainly willing to have that conversation with him and see what he thinks the solution is.
Well, it'd be good, I mean, to do.
Just if you, if you want to just call him back and get, see what his thoughts are on, you know, and if he thinks it's just a, something he can adjust without us needing to put language in the contract, then I'm willing to listen to that. But I just wanted to bring the concerns up that we, we got during the mowing season and make sure that we address them going forward before it happens again this summer. However, however we need to fix it is fine, but we just need to fix it.
Robbie, where are we? Do we have a vote at all? Do we have two, do we have two council members voting?
Let's see here. So Mr. Jones made a motion. Mr. Landrath did second that motion. Mr. Rigsby asked for an amendment to specify that a time period for them to come back and, and remove the dead grass however they seem fit. So.
Okay, so we haven't taken a vote at all?
Correct. There's no vote taken.
Well, I guess if Mr. Rigsby proposed an amendment, that we need to vote on his amendment, which as I had it were the termination clause and dealing with the blowing.
Do you accept his amendment, Mr. Jones?
Well, my trouble is that, you know, that verbal I had with Mr. Hunter didn't, didn't contain any possibility of us inserting verbiage about the blowing or thirty day termination. I'd rather not just because of that. I respect what Mr. Rig, the point Mr. Rigsby brought up. I would, I would think if the soccer fields are not being mowed to a reasonable standard, whatever that might include, and that could include managing the refuge that comes off of it, that we can make that argument at any point in time. I would think, Mr. Winfrey, you know, he's always been very accommodating for the town. They've been doing this a long time for us and.
One thing I would suggest.
I think we'll be able to work it out, is what I think.
Yeah, I think we will too, but one thing I'd suggest is if, I mean, we are late in the day. Is going off the contract, trying to work it out, and then if we see we're not, it's not working, then we need to start early. And, you know, look for other alternatives if that need to be the case. I mean, I don't, I'm not saying, you know, I want to replace Mr. Hunter or anything like that, but they do, you know, there's legitimate concerns that we have had. I've heard them.
I would rather withdraw my motion entirely than try to make an ad hoc adjustment to this contract requiring him to perform blowing operations, which is something I don't, I for one don't entirely understand what the problem is and what the solution might be.
So I would be willing to amend my amendment to, to remove the blowing, but I would like to leave in the thirty day because it's consistent with other town contracts that we've been doing, that we have a thirty day out.
But that also means he can. It also means he can get out thirty days too, so.
Yeah.
Which I guess he could, I mean. Mr. Winfrey?
Well, you could turn the, turn the contract, say only the town has thirty day option to terminate and not, not the provider. That's, you don't have to make it mutual. You can make it just one-sided, right of termination.
I think we're overcomplicating this a little bit. I think we started with Hunter roughly in 2016 and Tim, you were on council, or you first joined council in 2015. And I think you lived through an experience where that field was in terrible condition and probably worked hand in hand with Hunter to get it where.
He performed some extra work over time for the town of Stokesdale, deep tining in some sand down the middle. And it's no comparison between the condition it's in now and what it was back then. And so I have to admit, I'm a little missed that people would complain in the context now versus how it used to be because this town spent, you know, made a big investment in those fields.
I think the grass clipping complaints, they're valid. We got to keep in mind, and maybe not everybody knows this, but the same folks that are pointing that out to us are very complimentary of the overall condition of those fields.
Well, is it your feeling we can solve this with reasonable dialogue between all parties concerned?
I would like to think that's, that should be the first path of action rather than, you know, beating this dead horse any longer. I mean, it's, he's done about seven years worth of work for us. I think the rate is very reasonable.
It might be.
It's in the budget.
We just need to have this conversation with him, but we could actually pay a landscaper to do this blowing outside of the contract. I mean, once he's mowed it, we could hire somebody else to do this blowing locally.
I think we need to understand what the root cause of the issue is and then, and he probably can tell us that better and then work and work to address around that.
Yeah, I'm just.
I don't dispute that we've had some rough patches in communication and there has been some folks that have shared concerns about the grass clippings.
Well, you know, and that's fine. We just can't expect a whole lot for, you know, a citizen or a council member to walk up to whoever's performing this work. That's, you know, they're trying to get it done, get to the next job and the next job and get, keep their production up. We need to handle this in a reasonable manner with Mr. Hunter. And I think he'll address it. I just think there's something we're missing here because the problem didn't exist a number of years ago. So I don't know what the difference is now. Maybe our fields have just matured and have come of age and they grow fast during certain periods, maybe when there's rain and that's just a function of nature. I don't know.
I mean, I guarantee you what's happening is he's, it's rained and he has to mow more, you know, take more off. And then they're leaving it and they're not getting it, you know, done. So, I mean, that just needs to be brought to his attention. I mean, I can't, I can't believe that he wouldn't.
Yeah, but again, you can't blow green grass. So I can see how he can say, well, you know, it won't blow after I've mowed it.
And then they got to get back out here. I mean, it's got to be done, so.
I think we can work through this.
I'll be willing to remove my amendment, but, but, but without, I would. I would, so are we, are we voting on, remind me, are we voting on extending his contract tonight? Or because I'm just, let me just put a point of reference though. Looking at this contract, we did not enter into this contract until April, April of twenty-three. So if we don't do anything tonight and we have a conversation with him, I mean, would he not, would he not be still under this kind of, under the twelve thousand going into February?
I think I read that the term, Article Two deals with the term until December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three.
We probably are in trouble as far as how our budget functions in that we would be, money would be being spent without the approval of this council if he's performing work.
We pretty much did that last time.
That's correct.
You need to put this on your calendar for next November. We don't need to be discussing this in January. We.
Yeah, last year at this time, the reason it was done in April is because we received the first quarter bill and then we realized there was no contract.
We're getting better.
Understood. That's right. So, but yeah, it's, it's, if I'm not mistaken, you all approved the invoice for that and then went into a new contract to cover the remaining three invoices.
Well, we've been with this guy for a long time. You know, like I said, if something happens and we can't get it worked out because you've got legitimate concerns and the people calling in have legitimate concerns, and then, you know, if need be, we'll be renegotiating this thing again in, well, hopefully November.
If he's not doing a reasonable job per the contract that's acceptable to the industry and reasonable standards, then I think we have an argument for, you know, breach of contract and can compel him to do so without additional verbiage in his contract. Just, that's the way it's, the way I see it.
Well, we saw it that way with Hunt, I'm sorry, with Beaver, but the attorney didn't see it that way.
Oh, oh, God, Mr. Rigsby.
Without a specific language in the contract. That's why we put the language in the contract.
There are two of us saying it that way. They just couldn't have another third one to say it that way.
I'm not even going to speak to, open that can of worms, but Mr. Hunter is a reputable business and I will continue to support him working for the town.
What other option, if you, if the timing of the renewals of these contracts is an issue, we could put a term that it automatically renews unless either party elects not to renew it.
Well, let's don't do it this time because we've got complications.
I understand.
And then we'll have an opportunity in, you know, start October or November to start talking about it, you know, surely. But then we'll know if we're still going to have problems or not.
Well, the motion on the floor gets us ninety-eight percent to where we need to go.
Yeah, and I've seconded it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
No.
Mr. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. Okay, folks, comments from the gallery. Anyone in the audience would like to address to council?
Yes, ma'am.
She'll step up to the podium and identify yourself.
I won't say I'm the elephant in the room, but.
Welcome.
Hello, it's good to see you all. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment. It's great to be here in Stokesdale. I used to live in Stokesdale for a while with my children on the other county side. But anyway, I'm Michelle Bardslay and I'm in Burmille Park, Greensboro. I'm running for North Carolina House District sixty-two. So I came to introduce myself to you all this evening and look forward to talking to you all individually as leaders. I think I've met, I've met a couple of you and I've left phone calls for several of you, so I'm the lady that left the message. So I'm here to serve this community. I'm a mother of four adult children who graduated from Guilford County Schools. I taught in GCS at Grimsley High School and the Academy at Smith and workforce development and high school programs. I've been married thirty-one years and now I have four grandchildren, so it's a great new stage of life. So I'm here to preserve the conservative values in North Carolina, protect our citizens and provide opportunities for a brighter future. I'm a Christian conservative Republican, in case you're wondering. And as an educator, businesswoman, community advocate, wife, mother and grandmother, I look forward to serving Stokesdale as well as the other small towns that we have and the big town because part of our district is Greensboro and High Point. So with my business finance background, I worked in corporate America for thirteen years as an accountant, financial analyst, an IT business analyst and project leader, and later became an educator. So I believe I bring a lot of great skills to your town to help you with your future goals. And so I'm here to say hello today and ask you to please get to know me a little bit more and definitely I'm going to ask you for your vote on February fifteenth. The primary is only a little more than thirty days out and primary election day is March fifth. So I hope to get to know each of you. I'm open to, you know, having coffee, having lunch in town, whatever you need. That if you'd like to ask me any questions, I'll be glad to talk and get to know you and serve you when I win the primary election. I got to win that first. Yes, so thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Can I ask you one question? I meant to ask you the other day and it just saved me some looking up. You said that there were five candidates. Is that on the Republican side or total?
There are five Republican candidates on the ballot for the primary.
Would you mind just listing them, just so we know who they are? Because I'm not familiar with that, that were five on the candidate, but if you don't want to, that's fine.
Didn't you know if you work for Coca-Cola, you never say Pepsi? Anyway, I will do that as a courtesy. Yes, sir, I will. There are two people who are already elected who are, have terms through twenty-twenty-five and one of those people is Ann Schneider from Oak Ridge, another one is Brett Moore from High Point. He just won his reelection on November seventh and his term goes through two years. He's town council. And then we have a prior member running who goes to my church also, Westover. And I was at the funeral today, by the way, for Sergeant Nix. He goes to our church and he served for eighteen years and his last time he served was twenty-eighteen. That's John Blust. And the last one is a young man who has a lot of great courage and a great ideas. He's twenty and he just got married last year to a friend of mine's daughter and he's on the ballot too. It's just a family around here. And I know every one of them and all of us candidates are amazing people. I believe we have great resumes. But I believe I'm the one that needs to be serving and represent our community. So there you go.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to start off the comments.
We got another comment. Just gentlemen right here. Come on up.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dwayne Dalton, eight three hundred Zebedee Lane here in Stokesdale. I just, just chomping at the bit. I just have a suggestion. I cut grass. I hate ugly, ugly yards. And what I do to keep my grass from building up, I use a bagger. And it catches the grass and it don't build up on the grass and boom, I got a pretty yard when I get to mow them.
So on the, just, this is, these soccer fields are like a real mower.
Right.
You know, so and they're using a tractor. So I agree with you, but I don't think, the problem is I don't think Hunter for this type job. He uses, he has a small mower that could have an attachment like that, so he would have to bring another piece of equipment. So that's kind of some of the dilemma is he doesn't have that, the ability to put that attachment on.
Okay, right, but with the streak that he leave, he could have a smaller mower. Just go down the streak and pick it up.
Yeah.
Versus having a blower, but if he want to use a blower, but I would just use a bag, just go down the streak and come back up.
Yeah, I agree. I don't care how he does, as long as he picks it up.
I mean, I'm just, like I said, that's just a suggestion and the excess grass is gone and the field looked pretty.
Yeah, I agree.
I cut grass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I want to start off with the council comments. Stokesdale Town Hall building will be, will be closed on Monday, January the fifteenth in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. The next regular town council, town, town of Stokesdale, Town Planning Board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January the twenty-fifth at seven P.M. And that would be here in the chamber. The next town, regular town of Stokesdale, Town Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February the eighth, twenty-twenty-four at seven in the council, in the council meeting room here. Jimmy or Jim? Council, council comments?
Just wanted to acknowledge all of our public elected officials that came out and continue to come out to Stokesdale. I think it's a credit to our community and to our, our public officials that come out and provide updates, spend their time servicing the community. And I think that makes, what makes Stokesdale great and is very reflective of them. And I'm just glad that they're coming out. We didn't always have that for whatever reason. It just seems like here in the last year, we've had a lot of our representatives coming by and I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Derek?
Several folks tonight have mentioned going to Sergeant Nix's service today at Westover. I just want to, I know that we all remember and honor his sacrifice and that we will continue to pray for comfort and peace for his family and his friends and his colleagues.
Jimmy?
Yeah, that's, I feel the same way that you just said about Sergeant Nix. That's a terrible, terrible thing. And I also appreciate everybody that comes out and speaks. We seem to be getting more people now that are willing to get up and say things and talk and we appreciate it because a lot of times we don't get any input or know what's, you know, going on downtown with the school boards and things. We appreciate that. Matter of fact, you were doing it before you ever got there, so thank you so much.
Tim?
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that's participated in our meeting, council, staff. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that's participated in our meeting, council, staff, citizens, elected officials. It's sometimes a slow, slow process and that's just the nature of the beast. I appreciate the six people that are still sitting here that have attended this meeting especially. And, uh, you know, it's every since Sergeant Nix was, was killed in what seems like a senseless action. Uh, you know, I've been a little bit more conscious around the gas station pumping gas myself and would urge our citizens to, to do the same. Thank you all.
I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. Be safe going home.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Tim?
Aye.
Eric? Tim?
Aye.
Jim, Jimmy? And I am also aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.